We are good to go with live on Facebook and live on Zoom.
All right, thank you very much Superintendent Sullivan. Welcome to the June 7th regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. We are here in the Learning Commons at the Cohasset Middle High School. You can also attend virtually via Zoom or via Facebook. Via Zoom, you are able to chat via Facebook as watch, listen only. So we have a fairly healthy agenda item tonight, so I will just get things rolling with a call to order. I'll start with Mr. Kearney.
President.
Mr. Carr.
President.
Ms. Leskey.
Ms. McCollum.
And Mr. Dowell, President, we have a unanimous attendance here at the school committee. And now we'll do our pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As far as opening remarks, I'm just going to note to everyone that we have a packed agenda on this one. We've got a couple of school improvement plans. We've got a vote on school improvement plans. We have one of our favorite lesson spotlights on learning along with a reorganization and calendar. These usually take quite a bit of time, so I am going to ask people to, to the extent they're speaking, to speak briefly and to assume materials are read by the committee. It's a diligent committee. We do whatever way to make sure that we look at materials in advance. So if you are presenting substantive things, you can just focus on new things or elements you want to highlight as opposed to walking us through things. First order of business on the agenda is a school committee reorganization. I do want to request a motion that we delay that. It is on the agenda twice. The second time is under the first bullet under school committee governance under I. And I want to make sure we get to our invited guests. So second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? None? All right, so we will move that, we will remove that and we'll skip over to public comment. The public comment section of the agenda is for individuals to make comments to the school committee about items of interest. It is about items that are supposed to be, that are not on the agenda. If you have an item for comment that is not on the agenda, then you, or that is on the agenda rather, you can let us know and we will make sure to come back to you. So with that, I will query to see if there is any public comment. All right, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Lee Norton, 390 Beechwood Street. May I sit?
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for hearing me. I'm here today as a concerned resident of Cohasset and a concerned teacher. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. It's to an issue involving Cohasset Public Schools nurses and the safety.
Miss Norton, we'll stop there. This is an item that is under a grievance process or under a collective bargaining issue. The correct form for that is through that process and not for the school committee public comment. The school committee public comment form is for individuals to raise concerns about them, not on behalf of an organization. And so if you have other items that not relate to an open grievance, I welcome them. But if your discussion and points relate to an open grievance, I kindly ask you to relinquish the floor.
I understand that. I know that my role as both a resident and a teacher is complex. However, as a resident, I do believe it's imperative that, that families understand the kinds of issues we're facing.
This is an item under open grievance. If you're out of order, I'm going to ask you to, to no longer speak.
Okay. I understand that. It's unfortunate that you're unwilling to let me, a taxpaying resident, read this statement into the public record.
Ms. Norton, again, I'm going to say we've had discussions with the Cohasset.
And consideration, and I kindly offer a copy in case you would like to further your understanding at another time.
I would gladly take a copy informally. And I will note for the record that we have engaged with your CTA president, Bob Rolinson, and offered to discuss these issues with him on numerous occasions, and those discussions have been rebuffed. So we welcome any comments from the teachers, from the unions to discuss this issue. It is an important issue. We do take it very seriously. And as we noted in our grievance denial letter to you, we do want to have further conversations with you, just not at the public committee public commentary.
I understand that. And I thank you for that. And I hope that this statement gives you a little bit more information with which to consider your issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other items for public comment? Anything online?
There's nothing online.
Great. Okay, we'll move past public comment and now we will go to our invited guests. This is person my favorite, second to our school agenda, the spotlight on learning. And today we were very special with the Cohasset Middle School Grade Eight Civics Project. So I'll invite our guests to come to the table.
Welcome students. Come on. We have such a cool project.
I'll sit back here with the young men. Well, I really just want to introduce what we're spotlighting tonight. It's, it's really, it's, I'm sorry? Yeah, I think Dr. Sullivan will bring the presentation.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure we'll.
But it's, it's really not about me. Oh, perfect. Okay. But I do want to make sure the school committee and the, the community, you know, see or know about some of the really amazing things that are happening at, at school. We totally, we really enjoy the, the opportunity to bring, put the spotlight on CMS. And at various times of the year, it's almost hard to choose which thing we're going to focus on. We had a lot of wonderful moments this spring, but I think the work of some of our teachers and some of our students was just so exemplary that we were really happy to share it in the spotlight. So Dr. Sullivan, if you don't mind going to the next slide. Joining me tonight are guests from our faculty, Dr. Mrs. Sarudy, who's a librarian, and she teaches our eighth grade research class. Mrs. Ashley Hannan, who's our civics teacher, which is an eighth grade class, and a number of grade eight students, Jasmine and Cassidy Orocho, Mary O'Fave, and Aaron Kiriyaki, Kendall Bryant, Saoja Maida. Is that, yeah? Good. And Aiden and Jacob, Tam, I'm sorry, Aiden Donlin and Jacob Tam. And if you don't mind going to the next one. They'll end up, they'll, they'll talk about what they've done within civics shortly. Few years, five years ago, shortly before COVID, Governor Baker signed a law, Chapter 296, in an action that was, it's also called the Act to Promote Civic Engagement, and it created provisions related to student-led civics projects that are aligned to the state's frameworks. And if you don't mind, we're not going to go over the whole law. But if you see on the next slide, there's just, the law basically said that each public school serving students in eighth grade should give their eighth grade students an opportunity to work on a nonpartisan civics project. They could work individually or in small groups. And the goal really was to, to give the students an opportunity to analyze complex issues, consider different viewpoints, make logical arguments and, you know, learn how to support their claims with evidence, engage in civil discourse, and demonstrate an understanding of the connections between the various levels of the government. It's a really well thought out and really neat piece of legislation that asks schools to do something special with their eighth graders. We were in a great position because we already had Mrs. Sarudy's research class and our civics course doing this with our eighth grade student. So if you don't mind, Sullivan, go to the next slide. So we've already done it, but I would say this year especially, Mrs. Sarudy and Mrs. Hannan have taken it to a new level as evidenced by the work of the students that are around me. So at this point, by way of a long-winded introduction, I'd like to give Mrs. Sarudy and Mrs. Hannan and our student guests a chance to talk about what they've done in civics.
Hold the applause.
So I wanted to just introduce, well, before, before we get started, I, you know, if you don't do it at the end, I want to do it now. These students in front of you are like the exemplars. And we actually, we just got off the bus recently on Friday from going to the state showcases at Clark University Worcester. And they went there because their projects just were cut above. So they were best practice and I want to give them. So I am Mrs. Rudy. I'm the school library, grades six through 12. I'm also the eighth grade research teacher. This is my ninth year, amazing, running a student-led civics project, research project that involves, that ends with a showcase to parents and community members. And it's an extended project. It's about like a four to six week project that involves lots of student choice and school voice. So I just wanted to put this up there because in the last few years, obviously DESI is now requiring this type of project for all eighth graders across the state. And they gave us some guidance on, you know, what the stages they wanted to see the kids go through. So we're going to actually, you know, go through those stages with you just to show you what our kids have been through and how much work they've completed.
Sure. So I'm responsible for steps one and five. So for step one, civics, it's important to understand government and the foundations, but also it's important that they know they have a voice. And this year we've been exploring different concerns they have locally, statewide and nationally. And they all picked one specific issue to focus on. And then, Mrs. Rudy? You just kind of carry on?
So in, in stage two, they're identifying an issue. And our students can choose any issue that they're interested in, but they have to stay in the theme of sustainability. That's our theme of the project, is sustainability. We really stretch that definition to, yes, sustainable, you know, renewable energy, ocean health, you know, typical sustainability topics. But we also stretch it into like sustainable lifestyles and sustainable communities. So we have topics that range from conservation and recycling to diversity in the curriculum. And you'll notice that I, I put their words up here, the trifles that they brought to states around us. So anything around those types of topics is, is fair game. And I do give them suggestions from former students, but they can come up with anything they like. They come up with some really great research questions. So I'm going to hold off a little bit on stage three because that is the meat and potatoes, that's, and that's for vegetarian, of my research class, the research and investigation stage. I'm going to show you that next. But a very, a newer, important part of this project is the development of an action plan. So not just research into the issues, but going beyond and proposing actionable items that are practical, that are doable, you know, kind of like smart tools for their projects.
So in my class this week, they just wrote letters. Some of you will be receiving letters in the next couple of weeks where they are making civic actions in their community. Like we have a bee garden that one group suggested, bringing more diversity to the classroom and providing programs for safe harbor, like a community run. So they come up with actions that they know can make a difference in their community. And it's just wonderful that their ideas they come up with.
Really impressive. And then lastly, there's, you'll notice stage six is reflecting and showcasing. We've been having a local showcase here at CMS for, this is the ninth year. And we are, we have three a year, the local showcases, where we invite parents, community members, local experts to see the research, to talk to the kids, interact, talk about their action plans. And you are all cordially invited. It's next Thursday, June 15th at 1:30 right here. And for the first time ever, we brought this to the, the state of Massachusetts, had their own state showcase at Clark University. We went there on Friday and it was phenomenal to see all across the state, all the different projects. I think ours was probably awesome, but you know. So I'm going to let the kids talk in one second. I just want, next slide, I just want to show you, and you can just fuzz through, there's six steps here. I just wanted to show you what the students in eighth grade research actually go through as part of, they learn a research process called the Big Six Research Process. It's been around for decades. And the level of research that they're doing is, is pretty phenomenal. They, I'm just going to talk about, like, you can typically get all the steps that they go through. But the most interesting right now for me is step two, that information-seeking strategy. So I just want to explain that a little. Because I'd say when they come to me, their, their main method of research is typing it at the top of Google and hitting return. So we, we need to get them out of that practice and looking at more credible sources. So in my class, they do a lot of like looking at database sources, looking at library sources, whether it's Pratt, Boston Public Library, this library. So the level and depth of their research is impressive. Their searching, strategic searching, advanced searching techniques that they develop are impressive. And yeah, so it's, it's something that I see, you know, they can carry on into high school and college and, you know, making, making research projects more approachable. So the real important part is hearing what the kids have to say about this experience. Yes, thank you. So I'm going to open it up to them. They've, you know, thought about what they wanted to say to you and I'm going to let them, I'll open it up for questions in a second, but I'll open this speech to you guys.
So for our project, we chose diversity and inclusivity in education. And we chose that because we're both Latina students in a predominantly white school. So we hear the different remarks students make. And we just think that students should be better educated on different cultures and when it's appropriate to make comments and when it's not appropriate. And what comments are appropriate and what comments aren't.
Well, the extended projects really gave us a nice break in between from when we were, when it was really finished the project and when we had to prepare it for states.
Yeah, it was really helpful to look at our project and develop it a lot more. But it definitely rose to expectations during the states.
We, we researched bees. We had a really great action plan that we came up with as a group. We want to build a pollinator garden at our school. And you said to educate the students about the importance of the pollinators. And it's not just for bees. It's really for all of the pollinators, like hummingbirds, like, and other insects. So I think it'll be a great thing for our campus.
It was a bit different presenting at the local showcase and the state showcase because at the local showcase, we had more familiar faces and we were less busy. And at the state showcase, it was really, really busy and kind of rushed because there were a lot of people we didn't know from different schools, Massachusetts. And it was, it was a unique experience file, so it was real.
Do you have any questions for us, students?
Over the fourth minute, any questions, comments from the committee members?
Yeah, I guess, so what did you guys find that the most interesting part of it? Was it the research or actually the, now, now when you do the research, the action? Are you guys going to continue the action?
Um, I mean, I've already emailed Dr. Collins. She's here. I didn't have a meeting. But I think it's just like, stuff like, you know, getting a grant, like, just all that, like continuing with your work even after the project's over. That's great, great.
And I'm just going to jump in because I find that, and you agree or not, that one of the requirements of the project is that interview a local expert in the community. And it seems like that's a really interesting part of a project because they get to connect to somebody in the community that really cares about this issue. It's not just an issue on paper. It's an issue they're living and breathing. And today, actually, our current semester students, we had two interviews. One with Steve Wetter of the Cohasset Alternative Energy Committee. And one with Jack Buckley of the Cohasset Center for Student Coastal Research. So we had students, you know, just the act of like interviewing someone, finding out someone's passions. You know, having, what did you guys think of that? What did you guys think?
My group is the B group and we interviewed John Belger from Harvard Farms.
Yes, we interviewed Nicole Lashkey from Safe Harbor.
That's a great one.
Then we also, we also, yeah, Kristin Hessen from East Coast Recovery Center. And for our project, we interviewed three people. We interviewed Ms. Evans. She's the sixth grade English teacher and works at the Diversity Club. And also Ms. Pierce, which is the guidance counselor, and also works for the Guidance Club. And then Ms. Lisa, that is the macro director.
Good question. Could any of us listen?
I was just wondering if these topics are diverse and interesting. And I was wondering what that topic selection was like and how you went from sort of a very broad idea of, or theme of sustainability that was really being, were being used in lots of, in its broadest of ways, to just these very specific and actually very appropriate for our particular Cohasset community topics.
So it's, I glossed over that. I'm glad you brought that up because it's actually one of the favorite, my favorite parts of the project is watching these students. So I don't give them the groups initially. They have to come up with their own ideas, their own interests. They have to break down questions on their own. And then to see them get together with a group and start negotiations because they're invested now. They want to do this. You know, Ted wants to do this. So it's like the watching the negotiations, the compromising, the trying to find similarities. Like it's really like a marvel to watch the kids, you know, really debate with what they want to do and come to compromise. And so far, so good. I mean, it's, it's, we take about a week to make it happen. And we spend a lot of time trying to really find something that will work for everyone. But yes, it's, and it's so diverse. I mean, I have this pack of fishing food waste are some of the topics, so. Yeah, we have go from, yeah, we have food waste group right now. We had a sustainable fishing. Someone just interviewed a local fisherman last week, so it's, but I love watching the kids get there.
Do any of the groups want to talk about how they sort of winnowed down and focused on their subject? Prior interest, experiences or needing something? The great topics, really impressive.
Mrs. Sarudy gave us some ideas for topics and all of us kind of like chose some of our interests in. And then once we all had some weird interest and we got together as a group and discussed the ones that we chose. And our group personally, we all chose that the bees were all interested in.
Did you all choose that?
Well, one of us like had it and then handled it. And then we were all talking about it and we're like, oh, that's actually really interesting. Get a lot out of that.
How do you guys got there?
Well, I initially wanted to do food waste, but Erin already had these great ideas for the substance abuse awareness, so.
You were involved in Safe Harbor, right? Is that part of how you became involved in or interested?
It's definitely, I think it's a big concern to me, my community, working with Safe Harbor to develop those ideas. And I might have learned from that to help me work into the project.
So for mine, I kind of was just like sleeping one night and I kind of thought with like, my very experiences, that, that would be the topic.
Mr. Carr, I see that.
Yeah. So I stand so you can see, I talk when I'm behind it. But so thanks for doing this. This is so cool. In little towns like this, we need engagement of people just like you to get stuff done. This is a part of what we do here. There's lots of people that you don't even know that are into things that you are interested in. So I have a friend named Roger Hill. He grew up here in town. He's a beekeeper and he makes his own honey locally. And I, he lives either in Cohasset or Sichet now, but he'd be a great person where the sports shop is in Cohasset. He owns the bakery there. And so he's like a good person to maybe talk to. And so one of the things that in saving the planet category that we're very pleased about is we've been working very closely with the Alternative Energy Committee. So pretty soon we're going to be the first town of our size to have an electric school bus. And so we're really excited about that. We're trying to figure out how to get that done, but maybe you guys would be some of our first passengers and take it for a spin. It's going to be really cool. Some other towns have gotten it. We could not do it or afford it if we didn't have the help of the state of Massachusetts and others. So we applied for grants. We really are, you know, are very much into that sort of thing. And, you know, somebody sent to our attention that the President of the United States has talked about coastal communities and a new thing where there's money available, you know, coastal communities. And so it kind of went around by email this week about, hey, we should apply for some of that money and figure out what to do. And it all starts with ideas like yours. So thanks for doing what you're doing, but please stay involved. And we will remind you to take a spin on our new electric bus.
Mr. Carr, I think the Palm Street Press is doing an article on it.
I can tell you for that. Yes, it is one of our lead articles and the issue should be coming out early next week. Dr. Sullivan was kind enough to send a lot of information to one of our student reporters. So everyone should know about it soon enough.
For me, I want to echo Mr. Carr's sentiments. I mean, I hope these projects have taught you that things can get done, that there are things you have to do to get it done and you can get involved. But the satisfaction of being involved is that you can actually make change. You can learn how to make change and you learn some, learn things along the way. I imagine that you learned a lot about bees as you were, as you were, as you were working with them. Bees are one of my favorite things because I'm definitely afraid of them. It's a love fear relationship. But, but definitely stay involved. Communities like ours especially are really run by our people. And, you know, being involved is, is really key. So congratulations on, on your great projects and thank you for all you're doing. And to the teachers, thank you. This sort of experiential learning is really critical to rebuilding well-rounded students, as you know. And we very much appreciate all the work that you guys do in allowing these opportunities. So thank you.
A quick, quick shout out for me that six years ago, the first experience I had with Cohasset students and teachers was Mrs. Sarudy's Sustainability Summit. And I was just blown away by it. And I, there was so much potential there and it was so nice because now it's fully the civics experience. And if you may, you may or may not know, but our vision at Cohasset Public Schools is to empower students to improve communities. That's what all the data and all the work came up with as a vision. So this is so perfect as an example of that. You know, keep moving in that direction, that, that whole process of, you know, coming up with an ideation and having an idea moving forward and researching and talking to experts because that's how you're going to make a big difference. So I just want to say thank you for that. And great job. I look forward to seeing what you all do as you move through high school. Thank you, Miss Anne. Superb, thank you. Enjoy the few days left.
Mr. Mills is next on the agenda. He doesn't get to escape just yet. Why don't you go first? I just want to make sure everybody goes. Mr. Mills can see everybody out. We'll hear from Mr. Brian Scott, the principal of our Cohasset High School on this school improvement plan. Last time we heard, school improvements plan for the two elementary level schools. And so we'll round that out this evening.
Yeah, so in the interest of time, I won't go through several surveys this year. We did our school council survey. We did a NEAS survey. Survey last year called CSCI survey, which is cultural survey. All with different rates of response. The NEAS work that we did this year was the most influential in kind of coming up with the target goals and aligning pretty directly with our strategic plan. So I feel pretty comfortable with that. I won't go through all of the survey results. Couple of things that I think stick out. One, you can never over communicate and you know what that looks like at the high school level is sometimes complicated because you want to deal directly with students. You want to have them advocate for themselves. They don't always necessarily report home what those conversations are. So there is a different level of engagement with parents that you need to kind of have. And so we're working through what that looks like as faculty. We do need to do a better job, I think, of onboarding new families. And I think that's a place where we can work with the PSO to get people situated, let them know what, what the pizza places are. You know, just kind of a local, what Cohasset is like and what kids do on the weekends and all of it. So things like Safe Harbor and places to get involved. And then identifying families that feel disconnected. That came out in a couple of surveys and it's, it's one of those things that's going to require more work. I don't know, because it's an anonymous survey, who they are or why they feel disconnected. So, you know, again, in the spirit of not over communicating, I think we just need to create more avenues for people to find information, have a voice, reach out, whether that's us being, I think it's us being proactive, whether it's copies with me or some kind of Zoom call or something like that. So, so those are some of the things that we'll be working on that came out in the survey. I think our commitment to safety has trended most positively since 2019. Kids feel very safe. Parents feel very safe. That comes through consistently. I think our improvements in terms of inclusivity and way students. I think our improvements in terms of inclusivity and ways students are engaging in those conversations um is really impressive to me. So that came out pretty, pretty clearly. And we're, at some point, we'll publish the YRBS survey that um data that we just got in. It's still being finalized by Safe Harbor, but those trend lines are great. The mental health of our students, substance abuse, vaping, uh, all of the trend lines are really in our favor right now. So that's a good thing. Uh, it doesn't mean that we still don't have things that we need to work on. So social emotional security is still a big issue for for kids. Um, and it's not so much the supports that are in place for them. It's their trust of each other and social media and um, you know, being their authentic self. So we need to develop some, some programming ways that kind of coax that up. So that was some of the survey due that we, we came through. Um, in terms of the school improvement plan, we've kept taking NEAS guidance and we haven't received the final report, but there were three kind of big areas, two of which made it into the school improvement plan. The first is, uh, and this has been a recommendation for several years, uh, we need to shore up our reading curriculum. So that's a known problem. It's not unique to us. Uh, there's a variety of reasons why it's a little out of place right now. Um, neither of the two school improvement goals are one-year fixes. There's a process that Doc Stone's put in place. We're in the process right now of taking it out of where it was and reformatting and putting it into where it's going to be. Uh, and that'll take time and resources and we'll go department by department, but that's one of the big goals. The other NEAS found that we were doing well, but informally, which is the processes around looking at data. So what data are we looking at? Uh, do we have a consensus on what is important? Is there a consistent process? Is there a consistent timeline, uh, other reporting help procedures? Uh, and how is that used to drive instruction? And that, you know, the NEAS report is a, is a grassroots report. It comes from the faculty. So both of these things were identified in the faculty work. We're looking right now to carve out time and come to some agreement. And I know we have the new data curriculum person coming in that will um have some more direction from him. So, you know, again, all of the things that came up in the report, none of them were surprising. The third thing that came up, and I don't know how they're gonna phrase it, was the fiscal plan. Um, and that didn't make it into the school improvement plan because I don't have one. So, so uh, we will do what we can. Um, and we'll see what NEAS struggled with it because they, they had the AI three reports. So they understand where the building is at, but they don't like to recommend things that impact budget or contracts. Um, so they, they're gonna, they're gonna figure out what they want to do with that. But those are the three big things that we anticipate coming up in the report, uh, to which I guess I made it into the school.
I'll move to the improvement plan. Before I do that, I, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Principal Scott for an amazing graduation. Your entire team did a wonderful job. It was so student-centered and um really, and congratulations, Mr. Carr, his daughter graduated. And anyone out there who's watching, who had a child who graduated, uh, that was a very wonderful and classy celebration for a great, great group of students.
Yeah, students are great because their speeches were good. The music circus is so generous with their staff and time. Uh, we're really lucky in that aspect, so.
It was, it was, you did a first-class job. And I will put up the school program plan now so you can see it. And these are the same, you'll notice that it's the same format as Dear Hill and Ozzy. So I'll skip through the um slides that are similar, but I will stop there for Principal Scott just to explain what that is.
Yeah, we did incorporate the vision of the graduate. Uh, we rolled that out this year. Um, some of the graphics made it into some of the student testimonies of graduations that I would like to hear. Uh, you know, we're really trying to streamline what we do in terms of student recognition and teaching and learning around three kind of amorphous subjects, inspiring character, uh, purposeful growth, and then scholarship serving the greater good. And I, and I think our kids are starting to hear it. Uh, and we're, we're trying to identify ways to show that when we see it um and celebrate those, those achievements, which are, you know, West Concretes and, you know, getting nine out of 10 on your math quiz, but it's important.
Same, same improvement elements. Add some school data here. We've gone over that, of course, quite a bit.
And we can just run to the uh.
Yeah, well, the goals. Okay, this is your first goal?
Yes, so the first goal is to develop urban curriculum. In a consistent format. Uh, like I said, we started with math and the arts this year. Uh, there are two more subjects on the docket for next year. We'll just continue to roll it uh as an ongoing process as this, you know. So that's the first goal. And the second goal, if you want to. Um, is like I said, to develop uh formal processes for collaboration and PDE to improve student learning will be. Um, and that involves curriculum instruction, professional development, um, and other student programming. So two big lifts, uh, things that I think will continue to be ongoing, but getting that first initial um, you know, philosophical discussion, some of the processes in place, uh, and then tweaking it as we go with it. And is there?
Right in line with the strategic plan as well. That's exactly where we're supposed to be in thirty years. It's quite there.
But we'll start anything, anything else before I open the board of the committee?
Pull my goal. Oh, that's it, just, just to do.
Yep. Um, I'll uh open the board of the committee. Uh, I'll just go first by person. I know, Mr. Kenny, you might want to go first, so Mr. Carr.
I just wanted to join uh Dr. Sullivan. I uh, graduation was excellent. I'm a little biased and I can graduate two out of two so far, but I just wanted to see, I thought your remarks were beautifully done. And it was just really well-written, very well-received. You should see the faces on some of the parents that like, that is the clearest explanation of the video that would, that I ever got away to the last day. It was really very nicely done. So congratulations. I know that kind of thing does not come easy. I'm sure it took your time, so congratulations.
Shaky pizza. If you get anything up here.
Okay, but it was very.
I think it comes easy for him.
It really was.
It's a really talented.
It was very, very nicely done.
I appreciate it.
Um, and we did this, um, you know, as you go through a lot of the work that you're doing in this category, you know, we want to be a resource for you. So whatever, if you, if you were finding you don't have what you need, we'll figure out how to help you.
Yeah.
This is really exciting stuff.
And um, NEAS concur that, you know, we're, we're very well-resourced in terms of like the support uh that the school committee has and central office. Um, you know, we have, we have what we need. Doesn't mean that we can't have more or need more, you know, need different things, but we are not in a position of some other places. So uh, we know that our kids are very fortunate for that.
Good. Congratulations.
Mr. Kenny?
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank the students and the faculty that put this together. It was, it was a really exciting, you know, I, I, I'm on a lot of committees and that one was always hard, hard for me. The last one, it was just great to see the students engaged and really trying to make a difference in our school. So that was wonderful to see. Um, and, and some of the things that they came up with, uh, as far as like the uh survey, say, like if somebody felt like if there was forty-five percent of, I, I think what came up was a way to try to get to us without us. I know it's anonymous, but also if you had a concern to email us and let us know. So they don't just write on the survey that this doesn't work for them. If, if you answer, this is what the kids came up with, if you answer that this doesn't work for us and you want to talk about it, feel free to do that. So, because some of these surveys, you don't really want to emphasize who you are.
Yeah.
But I also too, there is a big resource problem that I think that um we kind of, I think your, your hands is kind of tied. Uh, one of them means the arts, right? Every year, every school in the state has, pretty much every school I know has a play or a, we don't. We have, because the middle school has one year, the high school has the other. I'm looking for, look, how do we help you figure that problem? And I think, and I think as principals, I think to see you guys a little bit more engaged with some of those answers other than, hey, we don't have the facility. You know, that's kind of like what's been said for years and years and years. Well, that's, that's our job. We should, you should come to us and say, look, we should have arts every year because this school's makes me, you know, it's been, it's been said that we're only about sports. That's, that's one of the things that we hear. Cohasset only cares about sports. They don't care about the arts. And to that, when you look at, there's only one program every other year. That's something that I'd like to see that we're going to get as, as a community to say, listen, we need the resources. You know, same thing with some of the facility problems around here. You know, you walk into the middle school and Ted, Ted and I are tripping. Every time we come in there, there's a big gash in the sidewalk. We need to hear from you guys to say, these sidewalks need to be fixed. So that way you can get some attention. Because I think a lot of people go to you guys and say, hey, what do we need? And you guys are so polite, we appreciate it. I really want to hear something like, you know, let us know because center for the performing arts.
Right.
Okay, all right. And any other resources?
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Is last thing you'll do?
Well, I'll just second um the two theater productions a year. Um, you know, one for the middle school and one for the high school. My middle schooler, as a sixth grader, that, that was a transformative experience for her. Um, and she's actually, she started like counting out when she gets to do theater again. Um, so I think if there's a way to do that for the middle school, that's wonderful. But I have a question. Um, are you simultaneously reviewing your curriculum while you're documenting it? And sort of checking against best practices and, and things like that and getting rid of what you don't like and find new things? Or I, 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 it just seems like a great opportunity to, to sort of, when you're really digging in deep as to what are we teaching? What do these lessons look like? What materials do we have on hand? Um, to also review those materials.
Yeah, it should be a, a kind of a living document where, you know, you're, you're backwards planning from what the standards are now. Depending on the department, some of the standards have changed. So arts, foreign language, um USS freedom scope, the sequence changed more than the scope, although the scope changes a little bit with it. So those have to kind of be reworked as the state changes them. Some of the other ones, we need to constantly look like English. We need to constantly look at our um texts and, you know, are we still reading the same books that we've been reading for, you know, forty-five years and some of which might be good to keep. But um, yeah, there's a constant evaluation of what we're doing with some of the other resources.
Thank you.
So, Owen, anything of you?
Thank you. Um, just got one, one question from me. Uh, we mentioned that one of the NEAS comments was shoring up the curriculum. That's one of your goals. I guess, can you give us a little more explanations of what it means to, to shore up and to create a written curriculum in a consistent format? What are we, what are we missing now? And what, what's the, what's the kind of um evidence of we've, we've solved the problem?
The document is the, it will be the evidence. Uh, so without getting too much into the history, it was a problem that was identified at the last NEAS report as well. Uh, so which was just before I started. There was a curriculum that was paper documents, in binders, that went somewhere. I, I don't know where, but when we walked in, there wasn't. So for the next couple of years, the district and, and most of the high school, uh, and middle high school at, at the time was tasked with kind of recreating it. So the state standards are public, those are easy. But identifying um, you know, the, the, not just the standards, but the resources, the units of study, um, the essential questions that drive it, the universally designed measures that you incorporate into it. At one point, it was the culturally responsive methods that you're going to put in, the CAS lesson. So there's all kinds of things that kind of overlap what the standard is. You know, understand linear equations is one thing, and then there's forty-five other things that support that. There was a big push to do that in a software called Atlas Rubicon, which was fine for the high school and not as fine for some of the other levels of the district. So it was used inconsistently and it, it was never, it was kind of like, all right, we answered that. We're going to do something different over here. There was a lot of turnover um in that position. And so we finally, you know, over the last four or five years have kind of come to the consensus that that software wasn't really working. We've exported what we had. In the meantime, we've added courses. Um, some standards have changed. We haven't quite kept up with that. So it's really kind of a revamping of that.
So it's a curriculum review cycle.
Right.
Right.
So is it a documentation issue rather than a substance issue?
Yeah, no, we're, in, in most, I wouldn't say most, but maybe most schools run into that issue. It's, it's paperwork that is keeping up with it. But it's important for new teachers who are coming here and are teaching new courses to kind of see what those resources are.
It's also a public-facing format.
Yeah.
That we want to, we want to.
Correct.
And, and this is, I, I believe, I, I know, we as a committee approve a curriculum document at some point. Is that the document that you're talking, because I, I bet you that I would.
You approve studies.
Oh, your studies, okay, that's a different.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the classes, but the curriculum that drives those classes, that's what we have to do.
All right.
It's not that there isn't a curriculum, it's that the, the format isn't consistent.
So it's, it's a documentation.
Right, and we, and, and over, um, you know, and then during the pandemic, we moved heavily into Google. Right, so that became a platform that all the teachers were putting their information in, keeping all their units and their lessons. And the atlas was kind of stagnant in some ways. It wasn't, it wasn't a much of a living document. It wasn't, you know, you could change it, but it just like to um, Mr. Scott's point, it just kind of sat there as documentation versus um what was all the things that were happening. And it wasn't, it didn't transfer at all from the elementary schools. It just, it didn't work for them to put their stuff in there. So Google is how we live now and we are education plus for Google. So everything will move into that format.
Right, I have, I have no further questions. Thank you, uh, thank you. Anything else from you? We'll move on to, um, do you want to talk a little bit of SAT or do you want?
Um, well, that's why I, I had John go first.
I agree.
If, if, actually, if you want to, just for, for some places since you're here, we can quickly do the, as a panel.
It's very brief.
Yes, yeah, no, no point in retaining you here for, for a brief.
Sure, so the college board has decided to make their um SATs electronic, similar to what the MCAS did, which is great. It should make the administration simpler for the kids. The challenge like we have with the MCAS is that it requires a lot of backend work. So what we used to do and currently do is we offer the SATs on Saturday to whoever wants to sign up as a test center. Most of the kids are ours. We might get thirty in a sitting. Um, to continue to do that with an electronic format raises a couple of questions. Are we using our computers or do kids bring their own computers? And how do we know if the devices are um, have the requirements? Do we have to hire IT staff to come and support it like we do for the MCAS? So they're coming in on the weekend. So after all of that discussion, and you know, the few problems that we do have are typically kids who aren't Cohasset kids, not because it's their fault and they aren't good kids, but because we haven't communicated with them the same way we have with the kids that we know are coming. Um, so what we, what we decided to do is when they do go computer-based in the spring of twenty-four, that we will do what's called the SAT School Day, which is a prescribed date. It limits, it limits the test to just students in Cohasset, but it's done during the school day. So it will be very similar to uh NAP or an MCAS administration on a much simpler scale. And that way our IT staffs here will have resources.
That's great. So, and this was on the agenda because it came up in a prior session. So any questions from the, of the committee?
The fall will still be paper-based on the weekend.
I'm sorry.
The fall one, so the first administration in October, I think we do it, um, will be paper-based on a Saturday. And then moving forward will be during the school day. Most of the schools in the central are doing that.
We want to make sure we socialize this with you before we move formally after.
Well, from somebody who had to go to Walton to do SATs. And it was, it actually worked out with the girls got a ton of life and the, but they didn't have anywhere else to do the test. So I, I think this is a wonderful idea to do it during the school because it's, it is very stressful for the kids.
Yes.
You know, and it, that is, so I, I really appreciate you coming in with a solution to something that I'm full support of.
It's comforting to know an environment.
Yeah. It'll be.
And, and especially our kids, they keep, they'll do, if you ask them to do an SAT, they'll just keep doing it until they get to higher and higher scores.
Yeah.
Because I mean, Val or my daughters would do it every week if they.
I still do.
Yeah.
Just for fun, travel an SAT at the dial house?
I'm at nine hundred.
Well, I, I thank you for taking. That's terrific. It's fantastic.
Thank you, Principal Scott. Very much appreciate your input and your presentation on the plan.
I have an essay.
When, needs, need to be voted on or?
It will, it will.
We'll vote at the end.
If I, if I text you, we can go through it.
Text you to come back. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
With that, we'll, we'll move back to uh, Mr. Principal Mills, uh, with the uh, school improvement plan for the class mills. For yours.
Uh, I'm not sure, Doc Sullivan, where, what are you going to use for visuals? Are you just going to do us the plan?
I have, no, I have it here.
Okay.
I have it. If you just talk for a second, I guess.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, as I returned, uh.
Okay.
Uh, I wasn't sure how much else, like for instance, the high school went into, but if we're going to focus on the plan, it's the same template as the other schools. I wasn't sure how much else, like for instance, the high school went into, but if we're going to focus on the plan, it's the same template as the other schools. Oh, okay. So talk about the parent survey?
Yeah.
Just because we do have a lot on the agenda, you can focus on things that are most important. You don't have to go through all the details. But the things that you think are worthy of, of extra attention.
Yeah. Well, the maybe the best way, if I jumped into the school improvement plan, one of our school improvement goals is particularly around parent and school relations. A big piece of that is looking at the survey with our school council. And I think when we, when we met previously, we talked about having, there being a lot of questions that the data, we had questions after looking at the data, for instance, like family engagement. After we looked at this year's survey, you know, we felt like the the data sort of suggested that people want to be more interested and, but we're not sure to what degree. It's kind of down the middle. When it came to school fit, it was the same sort of thing that overwhelmingly people felt that the school, you know, is a good fit for their, for their children. But, you know, we were kind of left with, okay, like what would it take to get up to into the eighties or nineties? How do we make sure that we're, we're a school that, you know, that almost every parent feels great, if not all parents feel great about? Same thing, really with each of the, the survey results, learning behaviors. Majority of people feel that, that children are engaged and motivated by the academics. But same thing, we were left wondering, how can we do better? Same thing with climate, which is very positive as far as the levels of respect. But we, we came around, came away thinking that there are more things that we'd like to find out. So once we get into the school improvement plan, we'll kind of talk about where that's going to be pursued. But it's like any survey, it sort of, it brings up some great pieces. Majority of people feel that CMS is heading in the right direction, but really it left us with a lot of questions. Dr. Sullivan, you can go through the rest of the survey about, well, how do we, how do we do better? It's not like we've got a trend line for all these things. But, you know, how, how do we make sure that, that, you know, we're moving in the right direction? And so, yeah, so our next step for create, definitely, I think one of the things we saw is the opportunity, the parents like the parent conferences, but how do we increase the parent teacher connection? And then further explore parents' feelings about school fit and barriers to engagement.
Again, same, same elements that we've been talking about. Student enrollment. See, you broke it out a little more, three years. You know, the MCAS data, we talked about that quite a bit. And here we go.
Yep. So the first area for the school improvement plan, the first goal has to do with curriculum. And I, I guess I like to couch it sort of the big picture. I mean, part of the district improvement plan calls for increased project based learning opportunities for our kids. Where several years ago, there was some very good trainings that we've done. And some of my veteran teachers still are so committed to PBL and they want to jump rate back in, but we recognize a lot of the faculty aren't there yet. They don't have that training. They don't have the background in it. Before we can take that step for training, we recognize that with Dr. Scholar's work with the curriculum review process, that we're still in a place where we have to sort of review our curriculum. Make sure, for instance, we are aligned with the frameworks, that the resources that we're using are, you know, fully aligned and effective. So the goal for next year is going to be to, it's going to be ongoing evaluation of the curriculum, instruction and assessment across all content areas. Then specifically, the action plan calls for each of the CMS curriculum departments to develop or redesign or enhance their curriculum using the curriculum review cycle. And there are different places in it. That includes the math department and who will explore the development and redesign of their curriculum. They're on second phase after working this year on a review of the math curriculum. The third bullet, wellness and counseling departments begin their analysis next year. Visual and performing arts departments. They are also in phase two, so they're looking, redesigning their curriculum next year. And then overall, this will get us in a place later in the year for the faculty to begin training on project based learning. So it's, it's kind of a, the focus next year is continuing to work on curriculum and evaluating it and defining it. And then hopefully, well, I feel confident we'll be in a position in the fall where we can begin training. And to preview the twenty four, twenty five school improvement plan, the first goal is going to be training and implementation project based learning. So it's the first goal. Second goal is around social, students' social emotional development. And we use the pair survey. It's a holistic student assessment. The pairs is the partnership for educational, education and resilience. It's a partnership between Clay Hospital and Harvard. And they've created the survey that we've used now. This is our second year. Students take it twice a year and it indicates strengths, areas of strength and areas of challenge for certain developmental SEL stages. So our goal, the, the second goal will be to, once again, do the pair, use that data as well as other data like faculty observations, YRBS, to identify either classroom grade level or even schoolwide strategies to help students strengthen those areas for challenge. And our goal would be to have four strategies focused on promoting those equitable opportunities for some social emotional wellness for our kids. And it sort of allows for the fact that we have a similar goal this year. This year's kids, wonderful student body, as we fold into next year, we're going to have kids that three grades of kids who are different. Kids who experienced COVID at different ages. And I mean, already this year, we've noticed through pair and through observation that the sixth graders are very different than the eighth graders were when in sixth grade. So this allows us sort of, you know, flexible way to help kids where they are. And then the third goal is back to the parent survey. And it's, the goal would be to use the the student, the parent survey, I should say, to identify three new benefits for promoting more effective communication, engagement partnerships between home and community. For instance, like the action plan would, you know, include development opportunities for parents and teachers to continue to meet, to discuss and support student growth. Obviously, parent, teacher conferences will be continued next year. We're going to look for other, other opportunities. We piloted this year parent coffees and they were really successful. So we're going to look for other, maybe less, maybe less structured than parent conference, but opportunities for parents to come in and meet with teachers and get to know, you know, each other, be able to speak inform, more informally. Collaboratively plan a fundraiser with PSO, which we did this year. The high school and CMS PSO. Collaboratively, we planned and implemented a color run day that was fundraiser. Will we visit that and then continue to keep working on a fundraiser to support the PSO? And the great work that they do. And then lastly, we'll certainly do the parent survey again, but we'll work on analyzing this last, this set of data that we collected in December. Use that to find, like I said, three, three new ways to keep, keep bringing our parents in and partnering more closely with them. That's our goal for next year, our goals for next year.
Any comments in the venue, Mr. Carr?
I think this is just, I think in general, this is a great thing to do on a regular basis to go through these things. I think we, we all learn a lot from them. You can see where we're doing well and where we're going. So I just think the process is excellent. And very informative. I know it's a lot of work for you, for you guys, but this is really important to give us some direction on what we're doing and make sure we're accountable for what parents do.
I'm, I'm proud to come into DOP because the school council I have, especially I had this year, was absolutely wonderful. Three teachers and three parents and Mr. Dial. And it was a really enjoyable group to work with and really, really passionate and really committed. So to be able to put something like this together collaboratively with them, it was like a work of love and I'm happy and proud to come in and show a share of the.
It's wonderful that the balance, and that's the way it's structured is there's a balance of staff, which includes one administrator and teachers, and that number equals the number of family members you have on that. And it balances out. So it does, it does provide a very collaborative, community based group to improve the schools. So it's, it's a, I think a powerful structure if used appropriately and really looking at data. And that's what these groups are doing. So. Nice job.
Mr. Kearney?
Yeah, you know, one of the things I could say is that as far as the surveys go, seeing you five years ago, they don't know what it's going to say. So that's close to you. And, and that to me is, is really the information that we get back, right? Because everybody having to see eighty percent and then to hear you work for ninety percent, that, that is, that's awesome. I do want to bring back like what I was saying about earlier about like, when you do have somebody that has a problem with the school, maybe you can get a kind of a, like, maybe an email to you so that they can identify, because a lot of these are anonymous, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So if you do, if you do get somebody that said that the kid's not doing well, that they feel feel left out or any of those, there should be a component in there, maybe to get to you and say, these are surveys. However, if you want to have that conversation with us, we're open to it. So that's one of the things I got from the student council at the high school. That came from kids. I thought that was great. And again, I'll reiterate what I said to Principal Scott, and that's, if you guys see something, please tell us. I know, I know we're in a community where we're all, you know, hey, our kids get everything. There are things that our kids need, that if you see that we, we need them, if it's structural, if it's, if it's emotional, if it's social emotional things such as, we talked about the arts program, pretty more of the arts end. Those are the things we'd like to hear from you. To say what specifically that we can do as a committee to advocate for our kids to the top. You know, those are the things that I think that we need to do a little bit better job as a school community is to advocate for our kids.
Yeah. Sometimes, sometimes you need to hear though, when things are going well and, you know, this is just the end of my fourth year here, but I've already seen processes really improved so that like if there's a facilities issue, you know, Nick Parati is just on top of things and he's set up a, a system to put in requests so that when I have a teacher at nine o'clock in the morning saying, my, you know, room is either freezing cold or boiling hot, kids fix so quickly. And you had mentioned like budgeting. I've all, like in each year, I got to thank the school committee because I felt really supported. You know, we, we put these, these ideas forward and we've asked for things. And I know, you know, you've got a fiduciary responsibility, but you're also amazingly supportive. So we really appreciate it. But yeah, as those questions, those things pop up, we're going to keep going for it. You know, we just, like I said, you strive enough for eighty percent. I want it to be ninety or a hundred percent.
Middle, as a middle school principal, former middle school principal, I will say, middle schools tend to not have the most popular survey results. It just can be kind of, it's a tough group. It's tough years. So those, those scores to me are, I, I'm, I think they're impressive, although I, I totally appreciate your motivation to make them.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Ms. Laskin, anything to add?
Um, yes, I go on, I thought, I think is a huge undertaking. And I'm wondering if, when we were talking about budget, whether or not you anticipate as people, as departments review their curriculum when they revise it, whether that includes purchasing new curricular materials or programs? And, and sort of how that will allow, and then PD involved in getting all of the teachers on board with the new, I feel like there are ten things in there. I, I think it's wonderful. So I'm just wondering sort of what you anticipate in terms of what you might need curricular, in terms of curricular materials and your upcoming budgets.
When I, when I talk about things like, you know, working well with facilities and school committee, the work that Dr. Scholar is doing around curriculum instruction has been great. So we, we've worked really closely on the curriculum process. And I know is, for instance, like with the math program, she's already, and I'll let you speak to it, but already sort of predicted out and worked you know, propose and make sure that the findings of these curriculum reviews, that we're able to like take steps to ameliorate the, the issues and be able to put resources in place. So she could probably speak to it, you know, in a much more granular way, but I feel really confident that we've got a good plan in place.
So why are you doing that? Because when we go through the review cycle, I already know certain things are already in play. I could already know that there's a textbook that's got to be. So, so I get quotes and kind of figure out, so I have a ballpark idea. It just so happened too that we also state decided to give. So I'm hoping, fingers crossed, that maybe we get that. But I had already, so yeah, that's a great question. We have to kind of anticipate that. Thank you for all you do. I think it was a fabulous template.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Principal Mills, on, on my side, the one thing I, I will offer as a parent of a rising sixth grader going into your, your school, I was surprised by the survey results because the people who I talked to uniformly give you great praise and give great praise to middle school. So seventy percent seems low. So I think it's a survey issue rather than, rather than the actual respondent. So I, I appreciate your, your, your plan here. I wish you the best in implementation. And I have a question. Thank you for, for all you do.
Wish you to approve these school.
Let's just see if we can close out the, oh, I thought you just vice chair, sorry. Anything else on, you, Ms. Mills?
No, I really appreciate the time and your support of the work that we, the whole faculty is doing.
Yeah.
Good team. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mills. Our next item, I suppose getting ahead to it. We did hear from the, the elementary schools, Deer Hill and Osgood last meeting. And so now it's to the committee to vote to approve these school improvement plans. Unless there are any questions or reason for discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve. We'll do that all at once, just because we can do one motion to approve the various school improvement plans. Got a motion?
Not doing it now.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Carr, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The school improvement plans are all approved as presented to the committee. Dr. Sullivan, please, you and the administration work in one and keep our surprise as they, as they proceed.
Thank you to everyone who's involved with those plans.
So that'll close off our invited guests. We'll move now to some school updates. And again, let's go through these fairly quickly, but there's good stuff to discuss.
We will. And, and this is just, you know, I'm sharing this. This is the Patriot Ledger's coverage of the, the graduation, but they have some registration, but just some photos so you get a sense for, for what was happening. It was wonderful. And you can see there that the staff lined, there was quite a lot of staff there lined the aisles as they came in from the back of the, of the tent there and walked right through them applauding. It's just a really nice touch and onto the stage. And then they are, you know, sitting, getting ready for the, for the event. Pledge of allegiance being read. You can see some of the singers. We had a choir sing the national anthem, which was nice. Students working in the pit. I, I had to say, you know, a lot of famous folks have been down there in the pit. Yeah. Celebrating and just hoping that the stage wouldn't start to rotate on us. It was lovely. And then just, yeah, beaming, happy, very deserving of praise students. So it was just really happy, pleasant night. You know, our valedictorians, it says Emily, it's Riley, but that's okay. And tremendous speakers, orators did a great job. And it was all about the students. So see what we're here, classroom reader. Just great pictures of a really lovely event. Really nice community celebration and had a real homespun feeling. Really nice community celebration and had a real homespun feel to it that you can only get in a wonderful town like Cohasset is the class president Santiago and his sister Mercedes who of course you, you know, has presented here so many times. So anyway, then we, it was just a lovely event. And then we had a lot of other celebrations that I highlighted. A student clap out of all, all of our buildings. So they paraded, the seniors paraded through the middle school, then the high school, walked out of the building to applause, then went over to Deer Hill and Osgood, that they own the Deer Hill Gardens. You can see when a little sister sees a big sister or someone who babysat, a babysitter, I guess. It's always a nice moment for them. And this is so motivational for our younger students too. Because it really gives them that spirit that, you know, you're gonna, we're gonna be there someday. We're gonna get there. This is similar to that spirit that we had when the students raised company cards for Mr. Sears' class and AP class. Just really nice, helps both groups very, very much. And they're, how many times did this group sit on the big stairs as little kids? I'll tell you, they didn't fill it up like that. But look at them now, right? Just, just fantastic. And again, there they are. Look at the, I love this, this student looking up at that giant of a kid, right? And thinking, maybe I'll be there someday and he will. So it's lovely. And there's of course Mr. I guess is like the most popular guy in the universe. So it was wonderful. And, you know, obviously the community does such a wonderful job celebrating. As I, I love the, the signs lining the, the comment. And this is our awards banquet, which was special and wonderful. They happen since our last meeting. So I just wanted to make sure I talked about that. And then, you know, we did this little thing called Talking to an Astronaut in Space. I'm still like, can't believe that happened, but our students were fantastic. And it was, it was a really nice event. One of the highlights of, of my career, I'd say, if I think about it, like what we did. I don't take that credit for it. It just was amazing to be able to talk to someone from space. I never thought I'd do that. And I can imagine the students had the same experience. It was really surreal and wonderful. So anyway, you know, we have a lot of, I won't put a video for you, but a lot of really happy kids, Oliver and crew there. It was nice that we got right in the space. And then just the last thing is the prom, prom went off without a hitch. It was beautiful and the red lion. I can't think of many towns that can do this, but we had our red carpet out of our beautiful town hall onto our common and then the students walk over to this amazingly picturesque barn to have their, their prom. Just incredible, incredible to think that our students are offered that and there's the prom procession and they, it looks so, so wonderful and sophisticated. And that the town really did a great job. June is prime monthly, celebrate diversity. And I love these, these signs, you know, everyone is accepted and be kindness and really, we really stress the idea that it's just a way of celebrating everybody. And the fact that everyone belongs here at the last public schools. So I just wanted to highlight those amazing things. And there's more too. And we can talk about, sorry, talk about sports and how our teams are faring. And even the teams that, that aren't, are still participating, did so well in the tournaments. The concerts that have happened have been fantastic. And the showcase for our student, our arts programs. The Arts Nights is one in Osgood today. It's been one. Each of the buildings have been wonderful. And we're really finishing the year, I think, with a lot of good events that are both socially appropriate and sort of culmination of the year, so to speak. So just wanted to provide that update because I thought these were pretty important events.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much, Dr. Sullivan. And I'd say our next gen item is a hiring update.
Yes, so the hiring update. So we, we're progressing very nicely on our hiring update. I wanted to give you all a kind of a rundown of where we are. This says newer existing position. And again, the new positions are positions that this committee funded or a, or maybe a switch in position. Like for instance, we were able to move our director of technology into the director of data and curriculum evaluation. So you'll see that on here. But here are all of our hires that are listed. These people have all signed on the dotted line. I want to thank the committees we hire by committee. So every one of these, these people were hired by a committee that had a, had people from a particular department or in some cases from a whole school or a whole school community. It's a really comprehensive and collaborative process. So thank you to everyone who served on that. But you can see all the hires that we have, the position pending written acceptance of offer. They've accepted these verbally, like this is happening right now. We're just awaiting the actual paper to come back. So I didn't feel it was appropriate to, to give the name, but they're hired. We have people hired in these positions. And then you can see what's left, the, the ones that are, have, don't have a name or an offer next to it are left. So we have two ESPs at the high school. We did have some movement. So one of the things that's, we don't have a lot of turnover in Cohasset in terms of teachers leaving unless they're retiring. But once in a while we'll have teachers who will want to slide to a different level, particularly as our elementary. Schools are, and I love this, that they're PKed at two and then three to five. But once in a while you'll have a teacher, because their license is elementary, who will, will want to work with a particular group. Because it's just sort of a change they needed. And that's happened in, in the case of, of these folks here who have moved into different positions, a special education teacher moving into a specials position, for instance, a fourth grade teacher, fifth grade teacher. To a second grade teaching position. Ms. Kirk, who was a special education program, moving to our new open preschool program. And really nice. It's nice. And, and by the way, Mrs. Campbell, eleven point five, that, that was by her, her desire. We would, we would put her at a three point off. I could, I mean, she's so great. It just, that's what she, she wanted to do. So. And then you can see, this is what we have left. But we've done well. I mean, considering it's, it's, you know, just, just June, beginning of June, we're in a very good spot. So thank you again to the principals and their committees. Any questions from the, I wanted, I think it was important just at this stage to give you and the community a kind of an overview of where we are.
That's, that's great. And definitely keep us posted as the, as the hiring commences. And, you know, look forward, make sure you get the good people as always.
They're the best. These people have been so high quality and the, you know, the first choice of every committee, committee local, which is fantastic.
Well, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. With that, move on to block F, teaching and learning. I'll turn it over to Dr. Leslie Scollins.
Mr. Dial, sorry.
Oh, please. Yes.
When staff moves within positions within the district, are those initiated by the staff person themselves? Or are they suggested by the administration within buildings or combination?
Well, there's a process for voluntary and involuntary transfer. All of these were voluntary transfers. So all of the ones that are listed there had asked to do this.
And do, is the philosophy to accommodate those desires to do a voluntary transfer?
Well, I, what I would say is we always want to get the best person in the, in the position. But we also want to be respectful of our staff. And so they would certainly be offered an opportunity for that position. There are, there have been some situations where we've been able to, to transition it. But we, we usually, usually this is part of the process, which means that they go through an interview process. They just get an interview and then they happen to be out the other candidates.
So they, they rise to be, to be the best candidate for that position that they would prefer to have them in their current.
Yeah, it's not just a, none of those, none of those, other than the, Mr. Clark, saying she wanted to add a quick five, that we accommodated that gradually, but we did. And then we were able to go through the hiring process. So every single one of those were. Yes, were, did emerge from a hiring process.
Thank you.
Good question.
I meant to do this, just trying to go to fast. Any other questions to the committee? All right. And then with that, we'll move to agenda block F and I'll turn it over to Dr. Leslie Scollins for academic initiatives and updates.
All right. So we are winding down. And so we're closing out committee work. The math and arts curricular view, we're finishing up those documents. So we'll be sharing those with you in the fall and those are all complete. Everyone's finishing up their assessments and CAS is complete, I think, by school was this week. So they are done. And the other assessments that we do in the spring, those are still in process at the elementary level, but those will be closing out. Family reports for dibbles and our eye ready assessments will go home to families next week prior to the end of school. So that way, parents will have them. I think they were home the last day last year and that was a little hard. The parents had questions. There was no one here. So we backed it up. So they'll be going out next week. I think middle school, I talked with Mr. Mills today, he thought they would be going out early side of the week and then on the fourteenth, Deer Hill and Osgood.
Great. One, one final thing. We will be sending out summer hours for our, our buildings on Friday. I was sending them out with the newsletter. So everybody has an idea of when they can access our buildings throughout the summer. And then we are planning an ice cream social again like we had last year. Going to try to make it a little more, I don't know, some more games and things other than just ice creams. That was sort of our first shot, but that'll be offered to the community again. I think it's a nice way of coming back after the summer to, to get things rolling. And so there we go.
Two more things. One is the kindergarten is moving from two semesters to trimester progress reports. So that will be happening next year. And then also we are going to have a new vendor for our website. So we'll be doing that over the summer. We'll be right, right over. They actually can purchase Blackboard, which is the site, the vendor that we use now. So eventually they're going to sunset that. Anyway, so we're jumping on early. So we'll be revamping our website. So I'm really excited about that because we wanted to do that and now, and now we are. So it's gonna be wonderful. So it allows us to get it where we want to be.
Well, by the end of the meeting, we'll have a reconstituted communications subcommittee. So that will hopefully be a resource for you and the residents.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Collins. So now I'll turn it over to Ms. Barbara Swanka and CPAC for student services update.
One question.
Mr. Clark?
Progress reports. How did those get to?
So, well, they're in Aspen.
You're gonna ask them.
You get them. You ask them, you know, you can access them on your portal there.
Will you ask for the help desk at Aspen? Who responds to that? Is that a contractor? Is that something here? If you need help with Aspen, it says helpdesk@.
Well, helpdesk@Cohasset, that's not that good.
Okay. So if you're in Aspen and you have some issue with Aspen, there's an email address that says, oh, that's you.
And then if we need help from Aspen, then wait, yeah, that's us. Are you having a problem? Do you need help?
No, I was, well.
You should let me know.
Talk to you offline.
Thank you. Let me know. Yeah.
Well, it's important. I mean, I, I will confess, you know, I have my own, own kids in a different town and I forget mine. For it all the time here. I'm the superintendent of Cohasset, I guess. So, you know, you can't contact the school.
Yes, we can help you with that.
I embarrass you.
I just, I was curious about progress reports.
And report cards. They're all in Aspen now. So they don't get delivered to you by tape.
A password overload. I don't know if I use, I have so many passwords in the house.
Great. So any other questions? Okay, I've done it twice now. All right, hearing none, we'll move over to student service update with Ms. Barbara and CPAC.
Yes.
I gave you the power.
Thank you. So I'm very happy tonight to have CPAC. As you know, you know, every year we kind of jointly do this presentation where we have the, this year the co-presidents of CPAC, Alison Ryan and Sarah Davis with us to kind of present a little bit of an overview of CPAC this year as well as looking forward. We've had kind of, you know, really a great year, really looking for membership and some nice needs in membership this year. Always looking for more. Make a little plug here for you guys. But I will please let you take it away.
Sure. Thank you so much for having us. I was remembering last year's beautiful presentation, the slideshow. We are much more formal this year. So we'll just sort of go through a little bit of what we did this year. We, the two of us were trying to get our feet under us a little bit. And we started the year with the basic rates presentation that is always done in September. To sort of jump a little bit ahead, we're hoping next year to also combine that with a joint presentation with PSO. That it can really hit a wider audience. That really kind of goes through the whole IEP process and, you know, lays out of these regulations and what parents need to know. So we thought it would be much more beneficial perhaps to present it to the whole school community. Because a lot of times we're sitting in CPAC meetings and we've already been through the process. So we partnered this year with PSO to do.
The MTSS presentation. We, we got a lot of positive feedback from like, because it was for everybody. So it was great for like, you know, parents that again, because we're already, if we're sitting listening to it at a CPAC meeting, our kids probably are the one we're getting MTSS. But some parents, many parents that aren't sitting there, their kids are. So they really like that. So that's why we were kind of thinking the basic rates would be just as helpful for regular parents.
And it was, it was so wonderful in the MTSS presentation to have all of the principals there and really see that partnership between, you know, the special education department and the principals and talk about how we kind of, you know, are in each other's worlds a little bit through MTSS. And it was so great to partner with the PSO and really get, like you said, a broader audience and reach out to people who, you know, it, it belongs for, the people who are not quite yet there.
Right. And to see the progression in the district. And this is what it looks like in Osgood and this is what it looks like in my school. Yeah, see a little bit of what's coming down the flank. So.
Yes, I think it was really helpful.
So we, we do some things kind of here on campus, so to speak. And then we also have parent coffees off campus. And Sarah goes to the couple of them this year.
Parents like those too. It's a little, you know, more cash. So I think it was a little easier for some people to maybe show up. So we might try and do more of those next year also.
And it's a nice forum for exactly what CPAC is supposed to be, is that parents want. And you don't, you know, always want it kind of in front of a whole group of people at, you know, a whole meeting of the directors. But that, you know, like, like you said, a more informal coffee by format.
Well, also speaking to that, because we had a lot more members this year. We had one person say that it would be nice if we could kind of come up with like, almost like subgroups within our group. So even when we're at like these coffees, like some parents might want to get together and talk about a specific issue that might not, you know, have to do with some other parents and what they're going through, but to kind of almost like add that extra layer of support for parents. And, you know, build their little village in a way. So that's kind of.
We were so thrilled to hear that because and that means that you have enough people to come to have some.
Have that happen.
So, and, and we have heard from a bunch of different parents who have sort of interest in particular areas. And then everyone also shows up to the table with the wrong set of expertise. So Sarah had done bulletin boards at the elementary school this year for dyslexia awareness. That were a huge hit and we're lining up some parents sort of own some responsibility kind of each month. So that they are more informative to the population.
So that's one of our goals next year. We're hoping we can get some other boards up there, not just that one, like I can be, I can be an expert on that one. But, you know, we want to hear what other parents want. Everyone to know about another specific learning difference.
And there are certain months that are kind of like highlighted as certain disability months, if you will, that could match the bullet board. You know, and a person who can really kind of spearhead that, you know, with that month and showcase that would be awesome.
So we're trying to, we're kind of trying to go for more like, like the team approach for CPAC and like have more participation. And like, we actually have a secretary now, which is incredible. Because Barbara, today I said, if you'd like, you could bring a PowerPoint. And I was like, I don't even know how to make a PowerPoint. That is not happening. But I'll, I'll type something. But now our secretary.
So these things maybe feel like, sound like really small things, but for this organization, it really is huge that different people are kind of getting it.
It really is. It's been a wonderful year and, and it really has been, you know, there's been kind of. It's been a wonderful year, and, and it really has been, you know, there's been kind of a lot of strides. It's been very positive. Very great. Thanks to both of you.
Yeah. We did have, we were thinking, we also, because we wanted, we were coming up with other goals. We were hoping that maybe, since we've been like two years out from the, the district-wide, like, the evaluation we had with the tier three reading, maybe next year, we could like have, get some more information about how it went, like, see some data, and see that, like, we've made progress, or what else needs to be done. So we thought that might be a good goal. Working on a website. Cue the secretary, it's going to be another goal of ours. And then also, we were talking about how, you know, if you guys want us to take on more of a part, like, I know we're supposed to like, sort of like advise, like CPAC, like, one of their, it's like an advisory group. So like, we were talking last year about possibly having a member of CPAC come like liaison to like, school committee meetings. So, you know.
Yeah, we do, they used to have. My first one's on committee.
Not necessarily the school committee liaison. I, I, you were the school committee liaison.
Yeah, yeah.
With you. But last year, it had been presented that perhaps a member of CPAC would join when Barbara would do her presentations.
That's great.
Maybe we could switch it up, have different, like, a different period of month from CPAC or something. Yeah, that was just another thing we were talking about. Yeah.
Any comments? Thank, thank you. First, any call to the fourth, I think, Ms. Carr, any questions? Mr. Kenny?
I just want to say thank you. I think this is great, great energy. It's good to see you guys really engaged with us. I love the idea of, like, almost branching off, like, a subcommittee in a sense, where I, I think that's a good way to get more parents to engage. Because you guys all know, once you're in, you're, it's like the school committee, when we first get a new member, we get, it's almost like, you're the new one, you know? Yeah. You don't, like, overwhelm them in a way. But once people start to bring it in and see that they can really make a difference, you'll start to see more engagement that way. So I think that's a fabulous idea to try to get more people involved. So I just wanted to make a comment to that. Yeah, I'm just, also too, is, is anything we can do, or any times that we can, anything we can do to any new ideas that come up, I'm really passionate about this as well. There's certain things that, to de-escalate kids now, as far as breathing goes, there's a breather, like, almost like a whistle, where it's nine breaths will calm people down. I think we should all kind of use that one as a, kind of de-escalates. Well, I, I did buy you one on Amazon. Put it around the table. Just little things like that. I think that we engage sort of folks in. I love seeing.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Ms. Leskey, any questions, comments?
I would just comment that I, thank you. And I think we're, I'm a special education parent, and I think we are extraordinarily lucky in this town to have the, the members of the classes at CPAC that we do. There's a high level of expertise within that group. There is a high level of involvement and willingness to get involved and to learn more and to educate others. And I think that we are extraordinarily lucky as a district to have parents who are willing to act with their children, and also to learn and share, and, and just that we should tap into your resources as, as often as we can. We're the content of the children.
Thank you. Ms. McGowan?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I, I am the liaison now. And as you both know, I, I come whenever I can. Sometimes I sit down, and I immediately call back to board, because it's a bit difficult time of the day for me. Usually eleven o'clock is, is hard. But I've, I've been going, I've gone to many CPAC meetings over the last few years, and I find it to be the singularly most valuable sort of non-school committee experience I've had in, in terms of bringing a lot of value back to this committee, to this table, so we can improve the district. I, I think there's so much candid community and stakeholder input that's exchanged there, and thought that I would never have been exposed to had I not joined that group from, you know, from my, my sort of exesecia role here. And it's just been a tremendous learning experience for me. And I, I, I think it really helps us in holding the administration accountable for what they do. Our administration needs to be held accountable. They do a wonderful job. But, and the school committee needs to be held accountable, because if we're not ensuring that the district is performing well for some of our students with, you know, the highest challenges, then we're not doing our job right. So I love sitting on that CPAC and hearing the, the feedback and hearing the discourse. She's been a, a new perspective that's opened my eyes. So I hope to serve on that, I hope to serve in that role, you know, as we're, I think we're going to be talking about that soon. But, and I know that Ms. Swanka takes it very seriously and gives a lot of attention to that. And as does Dr. Collins, they work very closely with CPAC, and there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of, you know, perspective exchanges between, you know, the administration and CPAC over the past years. And I think now, especially under your leadership, Sarah and Allison, I think it's starting to truly come back to that advisory council role. I, I was saying at one point, before the pandemic, I remember being on a Zoom meeting and saying that it's, I think, I think Allison was on the meeting. I said, I don't want this to turn into the special education parents adversary council. And it, it, it's now, because, because there's, if you have positive collaboration, there's so much good that we can do for the kids through that, through that group. The parents, someone just said it, I don't know if it was you, Sarah, said the parent, it was, I think it was Leskey. The parent is so well-versed in that, and so educated and intelligent, like the, the CPAC parent. And so, so we're so lucky to have them. So I just wanted to, I don't want to say too much during this meeting, because I was worried it was going to last long, but I did want to speak up for this particular topic, because I feel strongly about it. So thank you, thank you, thank you both for everything you do. And I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. You know, all, all that needs to be said, has been said. Thank you for this. I think, I think of CPAC as, you know, this committee's, you know, source of eyes and ears on, on what's going on. Your input to us is really valuable, so that we can help steer things for the students who lead them. And it's a priority for this committee to make sure that parents and students are getting the support that they need. One thing I've learned in this role is that the special education process is an incredibly complicated maze that until you go through it, you don't know just how difficult it can be. So that we have CPAC and people like you who are willing to volunteer time and help other parents through that process is huge. And I think the community owes you a, a debt. I, I personally appreciate it, and I know the community does as well. So thank you very much for all you do. And please let us know what we can do to help. And let's keep, you know, through our liaison or directly, let's keep lines of communication open on what, what we need and where we can do better as a district, and what we're doing well. Because the stuff that we're doing well, we can replicate in other places. So all feedback is, is welcome. So thank you very much for, for what you do.
And we just want to offer the same kind of big service.
Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
For next year.
I know.
No, it's a, it works for everyone else. And it's, it, a lot of times it works for me. It's just like, like the last meeting I came to. Do you remember that last meeting? When was the last meeting you guys had?
Last, this last month, yeah.
So was that the one? Because I remember I came in and I was like.
I think that was when you came in.
And then I had to leave, and me, I sat down, and I started laughing. So I was like, you gotta be kidding me. Like, it was within two minutes, I, I get a call. So it's just like, but that doesn't really happen. And I, I'm, I'm so, don't, don't, don't.
I'm just kidding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the crucially grown. It's been awesome. Yeah.
We'll continue.
Yeah, I think it will. I really do think it will. Yeah, it has to do with you guys, for sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day. All right, Ms. Swanka, I think we move on to your next subject, I don't data sharing.
Can I just say something? I wanted to, I was just trying to, I just wanted to congratulate them on, on the job they're doing. But I don't want to, I'm certainly not trying to undermine the efforts of, of others who had led that group in the past. I, I had a great working relationship with, like, Tara Malungus, who was the president. She, she was wonderful. So I'm not trying to certainly besmirch anyone. I was just, I was just sort of remarking that, that they were doing a great job. That's all.
Great. Was that when we went on to data sharing from Ms. Barbara Swanka?
Let me show you first. My data share is I typically do for the month, this is for the month of May. And without, you know, kind of leading you all the way through it, I don't need to do that. It, it is a long meeting tonight, but you can see there the, the annual reviews that we have had to date, the reevaluations that we have had to date, some initial evaluations, the outcomes, and the total numbers. May was a long month. Fifty-four meetings across the district. But, but, you know, really kind of good work there done all the way around. Right? And I have a couple of slides that I do want to share with you and show you a couple of different things. So let me see what else I can share with you.
I want to stop share.
Yeah. But I need to get back to. Oh, there, stop share. Thank you.
It's only been a few years. Believe it or not.
I have screens that I wasn't sharing.
Can't find the screen.
Yep. Thank you for your patience. This is our current special education percentages and numbers. And this is, if you remember, this is the one that every September, every January, and at the end of every year, we kind of present these to you in terms of percentages for students on IEPs at each of the different schools. And also, if you look at the different categories of qualifications for IEPs, you can see that as well. Our numbers are pretty standard, as they have been. Gone up a little bit at the elementaries, stayed a little bit more the same at the secondaries. Our categories are pretty standard and have pretty much remained the same, few little shifts here and there. But you can see there that our specific learning disabilities is the largest category, followed by health and then communication. None of those surprises. And then developmental delay, the communication developmental delay categories tend to be at the Osgood School with the younger students. But also, you know, pretty much kind of in line with communities around us, state standards in terms of breakdowns of disability areas, as well as percentages, so on and so forth. But that is kind of what our end of the year looks like. Final screen. Actually, there are two more, if you can bear with me for that. My looking back and moving forward screen, if you will. When I came onboard, we did a lot of talking around programming for the district, really kind of expanding our resources for the district. How could, you know, how could I enable the district to move forward and do this? So if we were to look back, when I first came onboard in terms of staffing, we added and made a little shift with school psychologists at the middle school and high school, who both test and counsel students. We have added a social worker at the secondary level. We added, as a result of one of our program evaluations, a special education reading teacher at the Deer Hill, who focuses primarily on reading. If we look at programming, as you know, we have doubled our pre-K program, and then we're opening our second classroom, which we are very excited about, and have been able to, you know, so far to date, take in all of the students who have applied to that. We have been in a very thoughtful and organic way, growing in our therapeutic programming. And what we've been doing for that is we've really been targeting and caseloading students with a particular teacher who have that area of disability, and that is the focus area for their inability to access the curriculum or make effective progress in school. What I can say to you is that next year officially, we will have therapeutic programs at the middle school and high school. They will be called the TLCs, the therapeutic learning centers. There is a middle school teacher who is devoted to that caseload of students, who will push into co-talk classes with students who, their disability area, as I said before, is in that area, and it is the impact that affects their ability to both access the curriculum and make effective progress, which is very different from a specific learning disability in reading, writing, or math. There is also one at the high school level, and that, you know, actually will be a full program where those teachers have that caseload of students push into classes with them, and have a pullout into their learning centers to support those students in that area. And we have been able to maintain our other teachers, special education teachers at the middle school and the high school, who really focus on students with specific learning disabilities, these have been additional teachers. So we're thrilled to be able to really bring therapeutic programming fully fledged to Cohasset public schools. Some of the initiatives that we have done and that are ongoing are MTSS Task Force. And as I am going to speak about this task force, I have to tell you that our work over the past two years in this task force really has yielded great results. Next year, what we are really going to be looking at is some of the members of that task force perhaps interested in going out to get some professional development formally outside of Cohasset, bring some things back in terms of continuing to expand the work both within the MTSS teams in the schools and also in our D cap on a district-wide level. But through that MTSS task force, I want to tell you that in the fall, about 26% of our referrals were coming through the MTSS teams, whereas in the spring, about 68% of the referrals are coming through our MTSS teams. So that really shows the growth in the work that we have done in that task force, and of what has been able to come through as a result of that, which I'm very happy to report. We have added in, thank you. We have added in parent surveys and agendas through the special education department, which we're very happy to do. And we continue that outreach with parents to make special education, as you noted, Mr. Dial, which is a very complex and involved system, a much more friendly system for our parents, and a much more understandable system. And as, as we have since I came onboard, we have monthly clinical consults, which we continue to be happy to provide to both our staff and to some parents if needed. Our areas of development is that we, you know, we now have the ACE membership, which is the Association for, for special educators and really for special education directors. But through that, we get three professional development opportunities a year, which really brings up-to-date knowledge to all of our staff, because myself and the team chairs attend and bring it back to our department meetings. Our special education and our five oh four process guides have been updated, and we do annual trainings on staff on those. We are going to be using, if you look in the training block right next to it, training on that process guide to help us in the new IEP. As you know, a new IEP is rolling out. We are in Cohasset, as our other South Shore towns are doing. Are using the 2324 school year to really train in that, and the 2425 school year to implement. I am looking forward next year to do some transportation training, which I did in my previous district, to help bus drivers and monitors with students who may have some needs on our. with students who may have some needs on our vehicles and how to best address those and be a resource. We have expanded our Bright and our William James interface. Much more use through our William James interface for families who are experiencing some mental health issues in their families and have upped our membership for next year as the use of it has grown and are projecting to up it further following your down the road. So we're very happy that we're able to offer that resource to families. In all areas, you move over again to the training in that orange red color there. Across our district, our progress reporting and data collection, both in general ed and in special ed continues to grow. And then in our, in our final area, our growth in CPAC is, as they pointed out, you know, really coming out of COVID and being able to kind of, you know, meet and grow that, that membership. Our partnering with St. Harpers and with our new Raising Hearts. And we're very happy to be able to partner with our our communities in that manner and engage with them. And just one more way that I want to share with you that we partner. I know that we have talked about this and I can't take all the credit. My my administrative assistant, much as Sarah was talking about having a a CPAC secretary, my administrative assistant is much more adept at this than I am. And I want to tell you that because of that, we are able to we have been able to set up Facebook page where we have partnered and I have, we have created our own. And you can see there I am, Barbara Serwanka. And we are friends with Cohasset 143 and we are able to post. This was our latest posting because as I have been reminded at these meetings, you know, our preschool families are not yet part of our school. How do they find everything out? They can go onto our website and try to do that. But they can also go onto the Cohasset 143 page and see postings for our preschool and its registration. And we are also going to use this for our child find opportunities and reach out in another way to our community and our public so that we can get our information out there to people who, you know, are not already part of our system, just like in CPAC and partnering with our PSO and kind of engaging families who are not already in kind of our special ed programming, families who are not already in our district or in special education have another opportunity to find us through this. That is my sharing.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Swan. Any comments or questions in committee? I'll just open the floor.
Ms. Swan, in the IEP pie chart, the category health, is that 504?
No, actually, that is still a qualifying category under IEPs. There are a variety of different health categories that students could qualify under. It could be something such as ADHD. It could be under anxiety because that is health. That also sometimes depending upon its level could fall under emotional. It also could be a hearing impairment. Things along those lines.
Oh, okay. I thought that would be a 504.
Sometimes they are. It depends whether specialized instruction is required in order for a child to access the curriculum or if it's just an accommodation, which would then lend itself to a 504.
Nice. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. You mentioned there were, I think, 54 evals this month or 53. What do you attribute that large number to?
So a lot of students' IEPs naturally do end up in the spring. And so there tends to be a heavy amount of reviews and reevaluations in the spring.
So it's not atypical?
And no, it is not atypical. And then too, a lot of times what we really saw was we saw, and we typically see this, especially among our students who are in early intervention. A lot of those evaluations are coming up and coming due to us for students who might be coming to our preschool. And that's very typical in the spring as well.
Okay. Great answer. The second pre-K classroom. Do we have appropriate financial resources in place to ensure that we have the furniture and other resources for the classroom, that second classroom to outfit it properly?
Yes, I did ask Principal Farrell about that when we were launching it. And she said that yes, they would have things in place for that.
Awesome. And lastly, that was a really encouraging update and I think you should be congratulated on all the responsiveness that you demonstrated through that. I mean, that, that certainly, I think, touched on a number of things that we talked about throughout the year and that have been evolving since previous years. And Facebook page, the preschool words, I mean, that was a media turnaround, right? So that was really impressive. So thank you for everything that you do and we're lucky to have you and continue with the great work. That was really encouraging. I love the MTSS Task Force.
Yes.
That's really innovative. I love that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Ms. Swan, I'll just echo Mr. Collins' comments. See a lot of improvement there. I love, my favorite slide was your looking back, looking ahead. That's, that's always a great reminder of where we started from and where we are going. And I definitely recognize a lot of improvement, a lot of responsiveness in the student services department. So thank you for all you're doing and I'm looking forward to another year of growth.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure, truly.
Right. That'll close off our agenda block F and bring us to agenda block B, which is budget, resources and governance, everyone's favorite agenda block. We do start off with actually one of my favorite agenda blocks, that's gifts. So I think we are accepting a gift.
Yes.
Giving a gift?
I have the gift here. This is the placement, maintenance or replacement of the weather station and lighting, lightning detection equipment that is stationed on the roof of Cohasset High School to be fully operational once again. Some of you may have heard throughout the year is a whistle that alerts anyone who's in the area that there's a system coming through that could create lightning. So it's a really nice safety measure. I'll read you what Ron Ford and my thanks to Ron Ford. You know, obviously, physical education, health and wellness teacher, I should say, and a wonderful coach, former athletic director, secured a grant from the South Shore Playhouse Associates and the Clark Chatterton Memorial Fund to replace the equipment and set up a five-year maintenance agreement to make the weather station and lightning detection equipment that is stationed on the roof of Cohasset High School fully operational once again. The music circus, as well as town recreation programs, youth sports organizations and our schools, and especially our athletic programs will all benefit greatly by having a weather station and lightning detection system that will alert our school staff, coaches, fans and student athletes when severe weather is approaching and allow everyone to take shelter safely. Now, the bonus is that our teachers at all levels can use the weather station data in their classroom curricula and, and the horn can be incorporated as part of the school safety plan. Mr. Longo from the South Shore Music Circus informed Ron that the South Shore Playhouse Associates has approved a donation of $14,900, which we have in front of you, which will cover the cost of all new equipment, including Sferic eHorn and weather station package installation and five years of maintenance. And there's an voice in agreement with that. The donation we named to the nonprofit Clark Chatterton, sorry, Memorial Fund, which will in turn donate the $14,900 plus any additional costs not anticipated to the school for the purchase of equipment and installation of this project. The only cost the schools will incur, as a port of view now, is $1,575 yearly software subscription fee that we already pay to run the software, display the weather bug program on the two monitors they currently have in the high school. So it will incur this gift, which will provide us a lot, would incur a continued $1,500 annual fee.
That we, we already paid now, so it's.
We pay now.
So this is not a new budget lineup.
No, we just, we're actually going to have working equipment.
Now we pay for broken equipment.
Well, it provides some, it provides some, some things for us, but not for full scope.
So this is what we call, this is a win.
This is a huge win if you. I think it's great. I think it's great.
Any questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Carr?
Maybe just for people at home. You can realize the music circus and melody tent are run by a nonprofit.
That's correct.
It is a local charitable organization that does exactly this. You know, pay for effort for Ron or whoever figured out to go to these guys, going to be funding it through Clark's charity. I mean, this is, this takes institutional knowledge of how things around here work that I want to make sure we constantly are paying attention to because this is a huge win. This is such a great opportunity for Fitz Longo and his family, right over here in Milken Field. They have long time members of the community. This is, this is a huge win for us. And I can't thank them enough. They fund stuff like this all over the South Shore and the Cape and the Islands. And so this is a huge win for us. This is a great thing to happen.
I agree.
We will vote to approve the gifts, but I understand there's more gifts. And so we'll go to the block at the.
Yes, I'm sorry. I cut my gifts short here.
We're embarrassed with the bridges on this.
The next gift is, actually, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to Director
Director of Finance.
Finance and Operations to talk about it. I wasn't aware of this gift, so I'll let you.
So this is, I know we approved previously two small check amounts projects that were happening immediately. I think one is
Sam's bigger day.
Yeah.
The one was for scooters. So this is in addition to those two. The PSO has graciously gifted us a additional check of $1,109.05 to cover several different grants, which are bolt awards at the Deer Hill for 1,097. Again, at Deer Hill, Concept Quest is a supplemental resource for Bridges Math Program. And then additionally, the notes to Deer Hill. Nope, I read that one. Great. For human data for the four schools, which I already mentioned. The print is so small. It's just like, not the self-imposed.
Not.
It all is good. Google Sheet, some Google Sheet texture art to go with a texture art unit and geography notification book, some giant sand timers, some small sand timer combo packages. And I think that's it. It's a, it's a, we're both, Miss Lani, small items.
Directly impact each of these various classes who requested the grant. So I'll speak a little bit of the school in the intended, given that I have an insider. This is part of the normal grant request process. And so these are materials that are requested by various stakeholders within the school community and approved by the PSO, their grant process. So and then there's a, so there's, there's, there's two checks. There's one for $4,109.05. And then the second one is $550 for a whale and dolphin conservation program. So.
Thank you.
Welcome. I think that concludes our gifts. Any other?
That's it.
With that, I'll open up to any questions, comments from the committee. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the receipt of both gifts. So maybe, Ms. Swan?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kierney, all in favor? Hi, opposed? The gifts are granted. Dark Sol, please send our great, our thanks to our gift givers and very much excited about our new and improved functioning weather station and lightning warning system, as well as the efforts the PSO does to make our, make our schools go better.
We'll do so as well. So thank you for the gifts.
Next up is, but the finance, I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance and Operations, Susan.
I don't, I don't think I have anything to report.
Those are the best updates.
Yeah.
The next reading will have everyone, and I think, you know, this update from a subcommittee discussion, but we can wait until that.
Subcommittees will come up in the agenda block age. So any updates on food service from the Finance and Operations perspective?
We are continuing to update in the navigator. So please make sure, you know, if you're at home and want to know updates on food service, please look at that. They do a nice job, I think, updating that.
They are on that, with specials on there.
Yeah, great. And then any updates on transportation? Again, just for background and Ms. Lesky, I love you for being, explaining this, but what we, we have these as standing agenda items because it wasn't apparent. It was apparent to me and I wanted to be apparent to the community, just the scope of the operations of the schools. The schools are not just a school, they're also a restaurant. They're also a transportation company. They're also a building management company. So this, these are opportunities for us to highlight some of the challenges and efforts that the school does to achieve those goals as well. So, so they don't always have updates as, as we're seeing now, but this is a place for them to make sure we do. So with that, transportation, a pitcher?
No, I mean, subcommittee will talk about transportation. At the next meeting will be my, my pleasure review.
And the last one, I think this one is a for our school facilities committee. Mr. Brown, Mr. Kierney, anything from there?
Yes, there's actually now three members of the school facility committee that are also on the school committee. So the update is, we actually need to, I think, replace us. There was an issue that was raised with that. And I, you know, initially, we did this because Mr. Care and I volunteered because we couldn't get it off the ground and we needed to get a forum together so we could get this committee going. It took us years to form it after I wrote the charge. So, you know, it's come to a point where I think, I think Lesky mentioned to me at some point that there are other people that are interested in serving on it. Maybe it wasn't you, maybe it was someone else. I thought it was you, but maybe it was Mr. Earls, who is the chairperson of the committee. So I'm sorry for falsely accusing you. But there are members, there are members of the community that, you know, applied for, you have to go through this process to apply for like a committee position. And there are some residual individuals that haven't been offered opportunities that I think would be interested in this one. And so I think that we need to, I don't really know. I guess what we would do, I, I, I think that we need to, we need to replace us post haste. I'm not really sure how to procedurally do this.
So in the, so it's the practice of the town that you continue to serve until you are replaced? So if they are committee members that are either appointed by the troika or the board of selectmen, there is a process that people are encouraged to apply, send a letter of interest. Once the board is selected, you can move yourself. It's almost instantaneous, but you continue to serve to perfectly.
Okay, so I would ask, and I think, maybe, maybe I'll just wait for, just makes sense to mention now. A future agenda item should be, we should review those candidates and we should make new appointments at the, at the next meeting or the, or the, the meeting after that. Like in the near future, we should do that, I think. Because I think there's an issue with school committee members serving as school committee appointees on the committee.
Is there, so that is important, obviously, committee. So I think we can probably put that on our next agenda item, our next meeting, which will be the 21st. So if we, if we're ready, then.
I, I think we are because Mr. Earls is aware of it. And he, so he must have been the person, I don't know why, if I were to discuss you, but it was, he must have been aware of it. So there's, there's some, there's some applications out there. And with, with, with what Mr. Cad Carr just offered, I think that it's definitely safe to put on the next agenda.
Yep.
I don't.
It's a matter of.
I just didn't hear anybody wanting to be with me. I would like to still serve as the community.
I know. The point is, Mr. Kierney, is I guess it's not proper.
Okay. If there's other people that want to be on there, I guess we got to.
Let's return you for it. Right, it's three.
Right, so every meeting would be a.
Right.
Oh, I get it. Okay. All right. So before it was just you and I, it wasn't.
I don't think it was, I think people took issue with that as well. I mean, obviously, I didn't know that at the time. I mean, we were just trying to pass forward this, but just the fact that the nominating board has its own members serving as the appointees is, I think we would take an issue with that as well.
Okay.
So, and now clearly we can't do it because it could be construed as liberation on school issues. And it's overwhelming, frankly.
It's a lot of work. Well, I mean, if no one else wants to, we did it because no one else applied to do it.
That's right. But now I think there are.
Okay. Okay, if there are, there are, if there aren't, then we can.
I know at least one by name that I'm not going to name on a public, I would say, I know that there's one person that is interested in doing it that has the application in. So that's, that's one. I think there's more.
So we'll look for more, more on that. Good, thank you. I will get on it.
Can I just say one more thing under G?
Yes.
It has been fun to watch Susan chase everybody for getting their bills in. Thank you for including us on that. If people are not hearing loud and clear, especially from the school committee, please get your finances in order by the end of the year. Follow Susan's excellent direction on this matter. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. McCollum.
Good job.
All right. So then that will bring us to our agenda blocking age, our reports from our school committees, subcommittees and liaisons. I will open it up to, open the floor to the school committee subcommittees.
We're going to have one soon, right?
Yeah.
We'll see that. We did have a wellness, that was great. We just have such a good group there.
And the students are great.
The students are great and parents. We're really, I think, this has been the year of, of action, you know, from the vending machines, the. Craig and Colin, while you work with nutrition, because that food services has been a part of that. That was one of the goals that we, one of the action goals that we were able to accomplish. The other action goal was to make the school. Activities, the after school programs and looking forward to the fitness aspect of that. Right now, we do have the learning Carmen open on Tuesday and Thursdays. Like to make sure that we continue that, but just got to say that I'm really proud to serve on the committee. That's pretty much it. Yeah.
Meaning we got it.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we had sort of a new formal meeting about it. Mostly it was a scheduling matter, graduation and that, but. We did get a chance to discuss. The bus parking situation and had some recommendations on that. I think that. We, while we, it is not ideal where we are currently that we should continue, it would be your recommendation that we continue that. On a month to month basis as long as we need it with the goal that we are really moving towards, you know, finding a full-time solution. We also discussed briefly, one of the things we need to decide is where does the charging station go for the electric bus? So we had some discussions on that. It is not unreasonable to move it. So. There was a great deal of thought about putting it where the buses are now and there's some thought about maybe. Putting it if our ultimate goal is to create something around the Deer Hill complex that maybe the charger for the electric bus goes there. So. It is not unreasonable to put it where it is now and move it to wherever our forever home for the buses ultimately go. So this was a matter, in the contract negotiation process, we also did discover that. We had been shorted on the type of charger. That's been resolved. So we now have the biggest Mamma Jamma charger for, I don't even know what that means, but. We are very lucky to have this charger at the expense of the provider of the bus. So that's a good thing. So. These are the things that we discussed and these are our sort of, you know, kind of, am I missing anything there?
Other than, the more point piece, I should say more point, there's not a bunch of point. In conversations with the private party. The, the rent is going up to the four thousand per month instead of the thirty five. It's six thousand more per year. Just the final compared to what other truck companies of that size take part. It's not ideal that we have to be a pocket all. But we don't have any options right now. So, no, in, in, we've been there two years, in, in the past two years. The parking lot is now paved. We have heat, our party is providing heated bathrooms, press tap queues. He provides the salt sanding and plowing between six and six thirty and, you know, sometimes that D W can't quite get to us that early in the morning. So, you know, we guarantee that. They, sorry, the last one, they have been lights, floodlights installed in the parking lot and there are also two security cameras out in that parking lot. So there's, there's been. Some, I shouldn't say some, there's been improvements that we haven't even asked for. They've just been supplied. Brief conversation with that gentleman. Was the possibility of if we needed to put the charging station there, would it be amenable? And the answer was yes. You have to have a certain amount of electricity coming through. Over at Deer Hill right now, they do not have that size electricity capacity. We have to install a transformer. In the parking lot where the current buses are now, they already have that level. So it would be a matter of putting a pad in. The urgency is the electric bus company needs school to install this charging station because the bus is coming from the beginning of school. So, so that's all. Basically, I mean, the recommendation, what we talked about is. It's where we are right now. It's what we have. There's nowhere else to go. And then, you know, the owner is available to put the pad there. We talked about the cost of the pad. It's a couple thousand dollars to move it. If we find a parking lot, we just move the pad. So that's kind of, that was pretty much still discussed at that meeting. Just because they, they, and now.
We did also briefly discuss that as we move towards finding a permanent home for our buses, that. We should maybe present some options on outside funding sources, either to help cover the majority of the cost part of the course. And that would include also approaching our legislators or first or standalone grants for specific needs, which is part of their charge in the house.
Yes.
And I think they're amenable to that. And so I think as we continue to move forward, we should be aggressive about it. And, but I think, look, if we can get to this point, this would highly likely be our last year there. And that's, I think, great for us. So it's not ideal. We can't afford it at the moment. It's, we want to get out of it, but I think these are sort of the things we talked at.
That's great. That's, it's good to hear. Moving on that. Any other comments from any of the subcommittee liaisons? Hearing now, we'll close off agenda item H. We'll go into agenda item I, school committee governance. This is the portion of the agenda where we normally just race through and then do a motion to adjourn and leave. But not tonight. Tonight, we have a substantive item, which is the school committee organization liaison and subcommittee assignment. So. With the reconstitution of the school committee, with the election of a new member, it's customary for the school committee to reorganize. And re-elect members to various positions, reassign subcommittee members and reassign liaison assignments. And so with that, I'll break up the, this part of the agenda for into three different parts. The first part will be the. Officers of the school committee itself, the chair, vice chair and secretary positions will nominate and vote on members for those. The second element will be the subcommittee membership. We'll nominate and elect members to the subcommittees and then we'll go into our representative and liaison assignments. So with that, the first position open for is the chair position. And I don't know if there's any discussion as to whether anyone wants to be chair. I would be willing to continue on in service.
Now, I just want to know, I so appreciate anyone does that. It's such a, it's, it's really a thing. I just want to say thank you.
Very welcome. Happy to do it. So.
Can I mention one thing in general?
Yes.
Just as the officer category, I, unless somebody is jumping up and down to do it, I have enjoyed being the secretary. We have caught up on you and that's, I'm glad to continue in that capacity. Kathy has been wonderful to work with. We would be lost without her, but we really are. In the home stretch of catching up on everything. So if somebody really wants to do it, I'm also glad to.
That's great.
And I would be at some, I do not know if I will ever run again for a three-year term, but I watched, there's two things that strikes me that I might, my third year. Can like to maybe be chair or vice chair, especially chair. Two, one thing. I really want to be very involved. We'll be starting collective bargaining again and I want to be very involved in that process. I've got a lot of experience there and then I've watched the role that Lance had, especially graduation, and that will be my last child here. And so that would be something I would be interested in. I'm very glad to continue to be secretary and I'm delighted to support you if you will keep slugging it out and. I don't know what Craig feels about.
Yeah, I, 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 I felt that when I was doing it, it made sense to just continuity purposes and also, I mean, before I served two. Terms as chair in a row, it was sort of handed off from person to person, but I, I found, and, and, and I only did it because it was during the pandemic and I think that it was, there was value in it. It's continuity and leadership there, but. In doing it, I found that it was, it was helpful because you sort of find, you know, your leadership style and. You sort of understand how to run it a little bit more effectively after the first year doing it. And then the second year, you can sort of hit the ground running. And accomplish some things, I think. So I, I was certainly, if no one else was, I was going to, if he was willing to accept nominate, Mr. Dial to, to do it again. So. I think it makes, makes sense.
Okay, and then.
Sounds like Mr. Kearney already did that. It's all second, I guess, second, Mr. Kearney's nomination of Lance Dial as chairperson of the school committee.
I guess we'll, we'll just bring back to a vote in the hall of favor. All opposed? I guess it should stay. But anyways, that, that motion carries. Now we have the vice chair position currently held by, by Mr. McCollum.
Very. Done nothing other than making preemptive motions.
But, you know, from, from my perspective, Craig has done a great job and.
Mine too.
Yeah.
No.
So. So you're the presumptive nominee, but anyone else interested?
Would you be willing to serve me?
Sure, yeah.
I never like stick with somebody with a job. Yeah, no, that's, that's, that is the, so. So I'd like to nominate Craig McCollum for the coach here. I mean, vice chair, sorry.
All right. We have, we have a motion for Craig McCollum as vice chair. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Carr. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing now from Mr. McCollum. Mr. McCollum, thank you for your continued service. And Mr. Carr, you expressed interest in maintaining a secretary.
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
I'll formally nominate Ted Carr, Secretary of School Committee.
Second.
All right. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. My wife's out of town, not watching, so she will not be there.
And Mr. Carr, I just wanted, you, you, you know, I, I wanted to try and get your attention before your daughter walked down. I mean, you know, even if you're not, you know, sitting on the stage, you saw. Principal Sullivan, I mean, you always feel, I think, always feel empowered to get up there and deliver the diploma to your own child, I think. I mean, I.
Thank you, absolutely.
Dr. Sullivan, I talked about that.
For talent.
And that, that's one of the, you know, there's a lot that we give as school committee members, we give as faculty, as administration. And one of the perks that you can get back is, is just that moment. So. That wherever we end up, that is, that is, that is on the table.
And you were at least able to embrace her right there.
Yes, very special.
Yes.
It's great.
So, okay, so now we'll move on to, so we have our officers and, and by the way, these, these motions will take effect at the end of this meeting. So we'll continue on in our current role, otherwise it's a little bit disruptive. Although that's the case here so far. So, subcommittee, we have four subcommittees. We have school governance, budget resources, communications. School governance has three primary functions, policy and standards. That's to review the school policies. I have been on this committee and I will tell you, we have lots of policies and it's a lot of work that remains to be done on policies and reviewing our policies. The second is collective bargaining. That function will be. Home, mostly quiet this year because that's usually when we negotiate our collective bargaining agreements, which will happen as Mr. Carr foresaw, and the following year, not next year. And then superintendent eval, that is part of the function of the, of the school governance subcommittee. In years past, we've really done that, as you may have seen from my communication with you earlier, more on an ad hoc basis rather than a formal committee meeting. But if we choose to do some, some committee meeting, it would be the school governance committee. So that's one body. I'll just go through all three and then we can talk about interests and joining.
Well, actually, it's four, right?
Oh, oh, yes, four. So food, sorry. Budget resources has, has three components, financing facilities, which is really the nuts and bolts operation of the school. Security, which is about security measures the school may need to adhere, and then projects in technology. These are the sorts of things that advance the school forward. So budget, budget resource is really about. Budget and school resources. Then communications, this one is, is really about outward looking commentary to families, websites, messages, public messages and that sort of thing. So that's communications. And last, it was a newly created committee, last year, food, service and nutrition, which I have to say has been fantastically successful. And I did want the committee to do as to whether we continue that committee given its success or repurpose it, repurpose a fourth committee for another goal. So that's something to, to, to think about. We can just carry it over or we can have that discussion, we can have that discussion at a later time. So. With that, I will turn it over to the, the committee and solicit volunteers for our interest on these, these subjects. Just let's make sure you have an opportunity to express your interest as well since you're new on there.
I'm happy to serve anywhere, but you know, my background is, is in education. And also, I mean, some of the communications things, because I did work as the director of advancement for a school as well. So very familiar with. Institution to institution.
That seems like an easy fix there.
You, you, you just talked yourself into the communication.
Great.
Yeah.
It's yours.
And then the, the other one that is, is a vacant role that does not have a comment is the school governance committee. I don't know if others are interested or if Miss Lesky are interested in being a part of that. I, I would like to stay on to the school governance committee, try to continue to work on the policies. If that is, if that pleases the group.
Yeah, I know that, I, I, I know that Mr. Carr expressed interest in collective bargaining. There's not going to be a lot of action there during that time and I, and Miss Lesky just described, I mean. Some issues describing school governance and communications to everybody. So, and Lydia needs to be, Miss Lesky needs to be replaced on each of these. So to me, it makes sense to have Miss Lesky step in. Do that.
I'm happy to do that if that's not taking a spot that someone else has interest in.
I was just pointing to Mr. Carr, I mentioned collective bargaining, but it's not, we're not in the bargaining cycle.
Okay, so, and Mr. Carr, Mr. Kearney, are you keen to continue on with your budget resources? I think you've done a commendable job.
They have it, yeah.
I was on that subcommittee last year and you guys eclipsed my role many, many times over. So thank you.
Dream team there.
And so that leads, Mr. Carr, are you willing to continue on with communications with Miss Lesky?
Yes, I'd be glad to.
And food, service and nutrition, I, I, we, we have this, happy to continue on the committee. It, it has met with a lot of success. So I'd like to just thought on whether we want to continue for another, another go around.
So like the chair role, I think that it would be good to have this for at least two years to see, because there's, 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 there are strides to be made there. We've made a few steps, but we're, we're not to where I, I was hoping to see us and that's not because of anyone's fault. It's because it's a slow burn. So I would like to keep it. Mr. Kearney, anything?
Yeah, I was, I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled to keep it. I would like to. I, I would like to add, if we could maybe. Take away nutrition and then add in arts and wellness. You know, over the years, that this, this will be my last year and one of the, you know, one of the things I think that, that it's been. Screaming out is the fact that the arts in the school aren't up to, up to par. You know, one of the challenges we have again is that it's, we don't have a place in theater because of the middle school, high school. So to, to be able to bring that to a subcommittee and try to really solve, solve and tackle that problem that's been plaguing our, our town for years. You know, we just hear it. I mean, it's, it's just such an important part of this community that's just not, especially over the pandemic. I would really like us to focus on. So I would like to add, if we could. Nutrition is kind of food services. So if we could add arts and wellness to that, just if I could just add that typically, that's an operational component, certainly. And typically food services is as well. It's usually handled in a wellness committee, which the district has to have. It's not, it's, it's very. It's been, and I think it's been a good experience, but it's not typical or even procedural to actually have a food service committee. It is operational, but I, you know, we. It is operational, but I, you know, we have, I just think if we keep adding these committees, they do, they they do, I think, sort of run into the operational world of of schools. Whereas, you know, you're obviously going to be working through some of these issues in budget, budget and finance subcommittees where you're recommending things. I just want, I just feel like I need to voice that as the, you know, operational year of the district, that that is not a typical point of entry in a subcommittee for a school committee. I mean, there there's challenges, obviously, right? We have only one middle school. We only have one art district. I'm not saying. And the and the high school.
Perhaps you'll open the floor to other comments from community members on their proposal to to modify the food service and nutrition committee to be food service and arts committee. Any other thoughts?
I have some thoughts. I think that, so what Dr. Sullivan mentioned was going through my mind as Mr. Kearney was speaking, because I do, I I so I understand where Mr. Kearney is coming from, because we formed this sort of ad hoc operational food service committee. And it is atypical to have the school committee involved in that. But I I think that there there are some, there are some differentiating factors between, like, first of all, I wouldn't put arts in the same category as food service and nutrition. I think they're they're kind of like apples and oranges. That would have to be a different ad hoc committee. But I think that the arts is too curricular for the school committee to have, to 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 sort of have like any sort of operational oversight over that. The food services is 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 not curricular. We're trying to make it a little bit more curricular. But and it is operational for sure, but it is a hugely important facet of the the school operations that is just, it's not, it's not curricular. Sort of, it it just doesn't. So I I think Dr. Sullivan is correct in that it may be a bit of an overstep. It's one that I'm very comfortable making, because I think it needs.
The food service.
Yes. I don't think that the arts is something that I'd be comfortable, the school committee, because then it's like, okay, do we have like a history subcommittee? Do we have a English subcommittee? Do we have, you know, it's, I I think that I I completely agree with Mr. Kearney's sentiments. And I would love to to to, I I think that what we can, what we can do is just sort of how we how we how we approach, how we approach special education. So the same sort of way, Mr. Kearney, that's how we need to do that. We need to, we, a few years ago, we 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 started to shine a large spotlight on special education. It's now become the student, director of student services was not at every other meeting at school committees. I mean, they came like maybe once a semester. And and so it changed. We changed that, and I think we could do the same thing with the arts. We just need to be able to, I think it's a different process than a subcommittee. So I I'd like to work with you on that. I think it's awesome. But I think that we need to involve the superintendent, assistant superintendent and the and the the art.
Oh, yeah, and we're not, I'm not trying to go away from the focus. I want to make that clear. The focus is that I I totally respect that, see, can see growth in that area. I'm just voicing my thought about structural standpoint.
And I I so I, so that's my feeling about the arts. Wellness, we have the the liaison role there that I think is, I mean, you're making great strides there, Kearney. At the food service and nutrition, I will push back on that. I understand there has been pushback from, you know, the the operational leaders in the school about that, not the superintendent. But it it it's just, it it's it's just, it's it's. I'm I'm, I view it as 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 too important not to have school committee oversight. It's just, it's the food that we're putting in the kids and how we're delivering it to them. It's just a major aspect of the 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 holistic approach to the wellness of the child, of the children here. So I'm just, I I am willing to push back on that. It is operational, you're correct. Maybe a little bit of an overstep, but I think it's an important one, and it has been a collaborative approach.
Well, oh, certainly. And but the well, I was, the only part I was making that typically that is, there is oversight needed in that. It's typically done through the wellness, because every every district has their wellness committee, we have one. That's where you typically would push the the movement of of our food and health and food choices. It it's, the arts, I think, is a different thing. So to me, it's just, you're just kind of doing some of the work of that committee, because that's the committee that is, does have community on it, does have school committee members on it or a school committee member on. So it's it's just sort of dividing that that wellness group into a subcommittee for a school committee. It, to me, it's not as of a big of a switch as that the arts would be. And again, not shy from the focus. The focus is.
Mr. Carr had a comment.
So so I'm on the board of another educational organization in Cleveland called Kennedy Donovan Centers. We help 10,000 young people and adults with developmental disabilities and other challenges. I review all the grants and I'm a signatory for the corporation. And the Mass Indowment for the Arts, which is a potential funding source for us, has a whole section on, you know, is there oversight of the arts? Is there board involvement in the arts? So I don't know what that looks like, but I think all brings up a very good point. We should figure out how to fit that in if we ever want to go out for outside funding, mass arts or some other thing. I noticed in a great application just to.
So why don't I propose this to this board? I think Mr. Kearney raised an excellent point that's worthy of further discussion. I don't know that we can get the full some discussion in today, because this this avenue of grant exploration is is important, how we can accomplish your goal. And and frankly, this is really the first time we started talking about a focus on the arts and from a committee drive. So I'd like to talk to you offline about how we can do that. And again, I think you have full buy-in from from this body. It's just a particular moment of how we do it. So with that, it seems like, though, we have proposed membership. I'll just read the names I've written down for each committee. And if that's correct, I'll entertain a motion to approve those names for each subcommittee. So what I have is for school governance, Lance Dial and Jennifer Leskey. Budget resources, Ted Carr, Paul Kearney. Communications, Ted Carr and Jennifer Leskey. And food services and nutrition, Craig McCollum and Paul Kearney. That's correct. I entertain a motion to approve the subcommittee assignments as I just like them out.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carr, motion seconded by Mr. McCollum, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We now have our next session, subcommittee assignments. Now comes our representative liaison assignments. I'm going to break this into two buckets. The first is our school councils. We have four school councils. We just accomplished the charge of the school councils today by approving the school improvement plans. These councils meet periodically through the year. And they, as Dr. Sullivan described earlier, have school council, student, school committee members who are liaisons to that council and they're members of parents and faculty, so.
They also just to to, because for Jen, they do handbooks as well. And then they they advise on certain budgetary items, particularly as they pertain to class sizes.
So we have one for each of the schools. Osgood, Deer Hill, middle school and high school. I will open it up to interest in each of the schools.
As a principal, school committee member, teacher representatives and parents.
Correct.
Equal. Equal teachers and then.
I'll I'll serve on whatever building that that doesn't, that people don't have an, you know, whatever. I I want everyone to go first and I'll take whatever role is left.
I'll 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 jump in and offer to reprise my middle school, school council number one, because I will have a rise in middle school. And number two, because I did such a terrible job that I need to. I will volunteer for the middle school.
And I will volunteer for the high school, three children in the high school. I just stick with high school unless anybody else wants it.
And and Mr. Carr, I don't feel compelled. I know you're, oh, you still have a high school, I assume, so keep you there. Do we have a Deer Hill?
It's between Ms. Leskey and I, what? Where are your kids?
I have a Deer Hill and a middle school, but I'm I'm also happy to.
Perfect.
Do awesome.
So perfect. Why don't you, why don't you do Deer Hill then and and I'll stay with with Mrs. Farrell.
Ms. Leskey is turning out to be a perfect replacement for Ms. St. On.
Jennifer's going to love this. An easy, an easy, like substitution chat. My my services.
With that, I'll I'll entertain a motion to approve Craig McCollum as the school council liaison for Osgood. Jennifer Leskey is the school council liaison for Deer Hill. Lance Dial for, as the school council liaison for middle school. And both Paul Kearney and Ted Carr as liaisons for the class high school.
Shout out.
Motion is made by Mr. McCollum. Second? Second by Ms. Leskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we have that. Now we'll just go through and we're going to just open up forum on the other remaining, the remaining. We have the sheet, agenda item I one, I'll go through and read each one. I will explain a couple. CEF is the Coasid Education Foundation. PEB is pension and employee benefits.
It's called OPE.
AEC is Alternative Energy Commission. And LRP is long range planning. Each of these are various committee engagements where we have liaisons from the school committee to go visit, work with those groups and come back and report to the school committee on how we can engage or result with the town. We have existing ones, the ones that are open right now with Ms. St. On's departure is just Alternative Energy Committee. So I'm content staying on to the long range planning committee. I can also do whatever else is necessary, but.
I mean, you got that, I think.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Am I?
I've been informed, no.
You are saying.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Then I'll stay on.
Craig, would you do?
I I nothing.
I'm glad to stick with OPE.
Okay.
I'm happy to stay select board with all the committees and if somebody wants to.
I mean, does it not make sense for you just to be the PSO liaison? You basically are the PSO, they don't, they don't contact me.
I will not be next year.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah. But I'm happy to do it.
I'll stay, it's fine.
All right, Ms. Leskey, is there anyone, these are George's, do you want to boot Mr. McCollum off of anything?
I'm a former CEF board member, so I'm happy to do that, Paul, if you're not, because you have a.
I I'd like to share that with you, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Do that together, because there is some.
The only rule is we can't have three.
The only one I really want to do is I want to replace Paul in the wellness committee.
Deny.
Dr. Sullivan's.
And I'm 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 very happy with Mr. Carr and the select board liaison. I think you do a great job there and as a legislative liaison as well, especially given your your recent comments. Ms. Leskey, any other posts you're interested in in doing? I I can tell you that with this committee, everything's up for grabs.
He'll bring it, take us out of.
We have joined Paul with diversity as well.
Absolutely. Any other comments or changes to this? The changes I have are adding Ms. Leskey to the CEF and the diversity committees and removing Ms. McCollum from long range planning. Here we go, the changes, what I'll do is entertain a motion for the liaison assignments to be approved as just reflected and and discussed.
Okay, AEC.
The AEC, oh, yes, we need the AEC member.
Thank you.
Alternative Energy Committee? I'll turn it over to Mr. Carr.
Mr. Carr.
So they're actually pretty highly functioning committee that deals down wide with matters around energy.
Mr. Carr did just get a nomination from Mr. McCollum.
I mean, I don't know, to me, it seems to make sense, but.
For me?
You have all the knowledge.
Okay. My wife is the chair of the.
Then you are.
Should be thrilled.
Excellent.
Thank you all for that, I will not forget.
I don't know, thanks, everybody.
I don't be really happy.
Yeah, that's funny.
With that revision, do we have any 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 further comments or do we have a motion to move some of? Mr. McCollum moved. Mr. Kearney, second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? All right, so the liaison assignments are assigned. Good luck, everyone, on your next year's agendas. We have completed our reorganization and liaison and subcommittee assignments. Congratulations to the the committee. We have next on the agenda item approval of policy for JFABD homeless students. I'm not sure who sent this.
We did, because we thought it was already, had already been approved.
Okay.
So that one needs to be updated for our civil rights.
Can you walk us through what the changes are?
Um, so.
There were huge.
They were not huge, I can't tell you exactly what they are, but if you look at those seven items there on the first page.
I should bring it up here.
Given the time, is there urgency to do this at this meeting or can we bring it back?
Yeah, I'd like to have this the first read if we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It it's, that's fine.
Yeah, the school year's ending.
Okay. Yes.
We can do it on the.
Mr. Kearney, I I appreciate, I know you had a coaching thing, I appreciate you. I don't have, I think we are, we are okay. We you have an executive session item, but that'll be fine.
Okay.
Eight forty-five.
All right. So. Oh, yes, and Mr. Kearney, for the record, I don't know that the, Mr. Kearney is departing at eight forty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
We.
Secret position on the wellness committee.
Now, do I have a motion to replace Mr. Kearney on the wellness committee? So we 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 have, we still have four members, so we, our quorum remains. Let us table the the approval of JFABD until the next meeting. There are no topics not not reasonably anticipated by me at this point. We have no minutes to approve. Future agenda items, I think I heard two. One, just generically, arts and annual arts and and theater is something to to talk about. And then school facilities committee, I think are those.
Can we add one thing?
Absolutely.
Right of. Is, could we periodically put, is it a suitable exemption under executive session to have collective bargaining strategy?
Yes, we have.
Regular, just periodically, that we spend a few minutes in executive session.
Yes, yes. And we have done that a couple of times. It has not been regular, so is is your thinking to have it as a more of a regular?
I think more of a regular thing.
Okay. We'll we'll discuss that. But I I do, I do value the the work of this committee, the input of this committee. So I think that's, I think that's a good idea. What you find is that these things fits and starts.
Yeah.
So nothing, 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 then there's like five things. But but I think it's, I think that's a good idea, so we can, we can start thinking about a regular session on that, Dr. Sullivan. So with that, we do have a reason to move into executive session. That's reason number four, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices and strategies. That requires a vote to move into executive session. I will ask for the vote to move into executive session not to reconvene in general, not to reconvene in general session. So at the conclusion of executive session, it will conclude the meeting. For those of you watching at home and for those of you remaining in the audience, we will, there's nothing to see after we go into executive session, so we will turn off the.
Question just about that, just because unexpectedly a matter came up on the collective bargaining thing. Must it be articulated in the agenda in advance or can we also discuss briefly another?
Collective bargaining item?
Yes.
Think it has to be.
Does have to, the reason doesn't have to, it has to be stated in open session. If you want to state right now.
Okay.
Reason. Three, first strategy for collective bargaining.
Okay, so I'd like to, I'd like to move that in addition to number four, but we also spent a few minutes on the collective bargaining.
Okay, I think that's number one, but I don't think it's the number, but excellent.
And I'll make sure it appears in the.
Great, so Mr. Carr made a motion to to go into executive session for reasons of collective bargaining and for security, not to reconvene in general session thereafter. Do I have a second?
Can I just say that was a topic not reasonably anticipated?
Certainly not, because it wasn't what they are.
Right, just no.
Raised by a member, what was?
So in order to, in order to move into executive session for the item that Mr. Carr has articulated, I believe it has to be, and it has to be an item not reasonably anticipated in forty-eight hours, because if it was reasonably anticipated in forty-nine hours, we should have posted.
It was not.
Yeah.
But executive session is always on here. You just have to state the reason that you're moving into, you don't have to post that on agenda, the the reason. You couldn't do an executive session for any reason if you hadn't posted executive session on that, but we always have it on.
But suffice it to say, whatever it is, we are, we are, there's a motion on the table that's been moved and appropriately seconded to move into executive session.
Like it isn't in my motion, because it has not been reasonably anticipated, I'd like to speak in this on executive session one.
Yes, so, okay, do we have a second of the intended motion?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Carr?
Hi.
And Ms. Leskey?
Hi.
Mr. McCollum?
Hi.
Mr. Dial?
Hi.
So now we'll move into executive session. Those of you who stayed with us at home, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nothing further to say? Nothing further to say. We will cut our our web feed, or whatever we call it now.
You got it.
Thank you very much.